One more time, three times. Again, I appreciate everybody being here. We are in a reconvene meeting, meeting that last week. We were at the Fine Arts Center, working with the Board of Education, and we reconvened that meeting till tonight to continue discussion on many items. I think my observation, I see many people representing one item. So I'll point at you and or something like that. And you buddies can get up or you can have a spokesperson, how you want to do like that.
Is there any public comment tonight?
No, I just happen to know some people out there. It's not public comment. They they're not on the agenda. Meaning, I just have to point at Dr. Thomas there and say, it's your time. And then I see the mayor and his group there. It'll be their time.
Isn't that what next, the public hearing is on the budget for next week? Isn't that what?
But that's the public hearing on the budget. Like, we're going to have some comment that they would like to add to the budget. I think you have to, and we'll listen to that tonight. Okay, I see the fire department here, I see the SCC here. And okay, we'll get to. So I'll try to point out and keep it going. But also, as Mr. Schirr mentioned there, a public hearing will be on June 11th at 6:00 P.M. That will be on our budget. And the audits will, questions, please share with us and we'll try to share back with you. Also, on June 11th, we'll be back in the situation where you can have public comment of the five-minute piece. But also, tonight is kind of a, we didn't have a real agenda. It's a, I know I, Dr. Thomas and I talked and invited him to come tonight. Mike and I talked and the mayor, for them to come and bring their request or comments to the thing. So if we can go ahead and get started, Dr. Thomas. Also, Dr. Thomas, make sure you introduce your friend with you.
I will, thank you. I'm on your work session. Pardon my little bit of fraud, but anyway, take an opportunity, just go ahead, Curtis and hand those out if you would, please. Just wanted to take an opportunity to share with you some of our budget requests and needs that you may or may not have seen. And I know that the budget has been put out for public comment and for public demonstration. And I just want to start out by saying thank you for the support that the county manager has provided to us with our budget this year. And but I just wanted to go over and just kind of, while we're grateful and thankful for the things that we do receive, the need is always, as everyone else has, is probably far greater than than what the capacity has available. But just wanted to share some things with you. As you open the packet on your left-hand side, I just, it's information items that are there, but I do want to draw to your attention the economic value of Southwestern Community College, which is this sheet that you have. It's two or three sheets down on your left-hand side. I think it's always important to be able to just have a conversation of what value the college brings within our region and to our people that we serve. And if you just look at the economic impact and you think about what our requests are due to the impact of what our college provides and presents to each one of our counties and the return on investment that you receive through tax dollars that come from each of the individuals that go through the college and take jobs. And I'll just use one real quick example. Kara Smith, last week, when we were doing the career certificates with the public school, they hired 13 RNs last year. Twelve of those RNs were hired, that were graduates of SCC. So just that return on investment. And then when you think about all the students that graduated, there were two of them that were going into the, I believe, the EMS that already had jobs as they walked out, being trained and co-trained in cooperation, collaboration with the college. So you can see that, and then you can see what the return on investment is for every dollar spent, the students gained $4.10 back. Those, that's real money to you, that's real money to us, that's real money to our economy. The total impact, $104.1 million, or supports about 2,142 jobs. So it's just an opportunity to see what the impact in the, that the college has to you as commissioners for Macon County, but also for our other counties within our region. The other one you have on the other side is Career and College Promise. That's just a collaboration. It shows you, demonstrates what collaborations we have with our public schools. That's where we teach welding, automotive, carpentry, and culinary and things of that nature. And those are just information items there. The other one I draw to your attention is on the right-hand side, which is pulled from the Community College Law of North Carolina, which is 115D-32, which I'm sure you probably all have been made aware of. But this is a list of the items that the Community College Law, and this happens to be the 23rd edition, which is the most recent that I have. But that's where I get my information from that I can share with you and say, hey, here's where we're coming from as a college, here's the support we need based on what's set out by law. And you can kind of go through that, I don't need to read everything to you, but it demonstrates cost of fuel, water, utilities, janitorial supplies. It's all the operational type stuff that we ask for on a continual basis and on ongoing So if you look at that list, and then if you go to our budget that I supplied in there for you, that we submit to Macon County each year at the request of the county manager, what our needs are, we submit those requests. And hopefully, some of it's funded, all of it's funded, or none of it may be funded, just depending on what maybe is going on within the county budget, I don't know. But on the operating expenses this year, as I said, the county manager was carried over $115,000 in capital and an additional $50,000. And that provided us enough money to hit our operational goals. But then that left us about $14,000. So we got about $129,090 left to go toward capital. And we're able to hit some of our needs, but if you would take an opportunity to turn to, I've got it listed with the heading Capital Request. And then you show a line item down below and it says Grove Center on it. You can see that this, these are the requests that have been generated by the individuals that work at the Grove Center. Our maintenance department works with the deans down there. These are things that have been asked for over time. There are a couple that are new on here this year because we had the state come out and provide a kind of a deferment, maintenance, and take a look at some of our facilities. And they have some what they call life safety issues that need to be addressed. They have ADA issues. So we put on our life safety issues, and I believe that if my math works out correctly, that's about $71,000 of life safety. But we have 129, which will leave us about $58,000 to address other issues. And if you look at some of the other, the page after that is Curtis's at Public Safety and Training. You have F cap report on there. And if you look at the additional F cap report, you see about $219,000 that are there to replace HVAC units that are out of date, that are on their last leg, and things of that nature that you just, we put on there. They're not things that we make up, they're things that we believe are needed and necessary based on reports that we receive. So these, these are not items that we're pulling out of the air from that standpoint. So if you take the $129,000 from the $1,581,951, again, the operational part of the budget has been covered, but that would leave about $1,184,384 worth of capital. And the $129,000 is a little bit less than 11% of what our capital needs are to just, some of it's tender loving care, just to keep up, painting, repairs, roofing, things of that nature, replacements of water heaters that were identified from the F cap, HVAC system, that's about $120,000 that's part of that F cap. So it's just things like that that I would like to share with you and give you the opportunity just to have have conversation over it. I know the budget's been presented, it's out for public review. It hasn't been voted on completely yet at this point in time, so I just ask for respectfully request some consideration be given to some of the needs that we have presented and concerns that we would draw to your attention.
I want to say thank you for providing that information. And I believe if I'm right on this, at our next meeting, June 11th, is when we'll respond to this, be a vote, or how do we do this, Mr. Rollins?
Well, I mean, if we want to discuss anything about Southwestern Community College's budget, as Dr. Thomas alluded to, SCC requested $1.5 million in total to cover, to cover the increased costs this year.
Right.
And of that, you know, as he mentioned, in the last two years, our funding to Southwestern Community College has increased by 72%. So we really stepped up with our appropriation to Southwestern Community College in these last two years. You know, it's much like the school system, the needs, much like the county, at our county buildings, the needs are great. I think, you know, while our annual appropriation to the school system is at a current set amount, you know, the needs that they requested in capital far exceeded that amount. But again, going back to what is the expected level of service and what is the level of service that we have provided consistently. And that here, you know, in this case with SCC, we have substantially increased our level of service by 72% over the last two years. But unfortunately, you know, there are needs across a lot of our departments, and while that we can't meet all those needs, as Dr. Thomas said, things like life safety issues, things of that nature, there's ample funding there to cover that. And again, this recommendation for funding, Southwestern Community College, is in line with the level of commitment that this board and previous boards, through adoption of previous budgets, have, we've kind of established that baseline. And this budget is is in line with that, what is now an enhanced baseline from two years ago, substantially, 72% more. And also, we just recently, in terms of capital needs, at the Grove Center and our Public Safety Training Center, we approved $3,050,000 towards a training facility and the addition of a science classroom at the Grove Center. So that would, that's county money, that $3,050,000 that will be going towards those facilities. So just to highlight our commitment there and that new enhanced level that we are funding Southwestern at.
Dr. Thomas, were you, was Southwestern eligible for COVID relief funds?
We were.
S R funds? Just curious, I mean, that pot ends.
Managing our budget with those COVID funds like everybody else did to make sure we didn't lay as many people off as we might not add to of air HVAC units and things of that nature at that point in time.
HVAC, exactly why I asked that question. I just happened to notice.
Yeah, the HVAC's on there.
A lot of HVAC on here that.
Yeah.
And I think this year too, we approved a, some additional monies over and above the budget for the replacement of some air handler units.
I would not say, Derek's incorrect in anything that he said, because he has the numbers and he knows it's 72%. I'd ask you to take a look at the previous seven years prior to the last two and just kind of look at what type of funding that college may or may not have received over those years. It is getting better, as Mr. Rollins, county manager, said. He is stepping up to the plate and realizing that there is a need and there's a return on that investment. But we've had requests in for several years on equipment, and we have things that break that we have to wait until the following year's budget. And, you know, I don't know how you handle your things within your organization or wherever, but, you know, when things have a need for HVAC units, you know, waiting three months is not always an ideal situation. Safety for other things are a concern for us and for me. It's, the funding is becoming more and more relevant to address some of the needs, but some of these needs have been there for several years and they have not been addressed. And that's all I would ask you to take a look at. Some of this can be pulled off of each year's request to you as a county, because a lot of this can be pulled off of the county's website also. So it's there, it's open record, so.
I believe the other day when we talked, you had a major concern, and Curtis may bring this up, about your training area out there with.
The driving range?
Yes.
The driving range is beginning to crumble. There's a two-foot by six-foot area that needs to be repaired. We have had that on, that request for resurfacing the driving range to the tune of 280, 350,000, to now it's up to $680,000 to repave that whole area, because at one time we were looking at bringing truck driving in, and Curtis needed the extra thickness of asphalt on that. And then it would also take care of some of the renovations that he had a need of. And we used some bond money at that time, Josh, to address those needs, just as we're using that bond money for the fire training tower. So some of those.
Important thing to remember, as Dr. Thomas said, you know, some of these things, the county's had a million dollars in appropriation, a fund balance appropriation that's been tied up in the fire safety training facility since probably 2017, that bond money was received. And that's been in the state construction office now for the last two years. And so we've had that money tied up to go toward this project that is just now, we're hearing from the state construction office that we can proceed. So that, you know, that's a big thing in moving forward for these other projects when we're supposedly about to move forward with this one project that's been hanging out there at the state now for 18 months, two years. So, you know, a lot of that is a function of just the, of things that are out of our control.
Right.
But nonetheless, with this new commitment, we'll be making those improvements out there.
But I'd just say, take a look at, you know, the commitments that the county has, as, you know, the Community College laws apply to the counties of what their resources are available. And just, if you have questions, please call me, holler at me. I'm more than happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I guess, when you and I talked the other day and looking at this information you I would say this training center paving area is a liability.
Curtis can't use that part of the training driving center at this point. I mean, it dips and those cars are what.
Dr. Thomas, you're talking about the big parking area out there by the UPS, that that's fenced in? Is that the parking lot you're talking about?
Yes, that's up above the UPS.
Yeah.
Driver training, yeah.
Okay. So the question I have is, every time I go by there, my son lives just on the other side of that, there are all kinds of sports cars out there, racing and all this other stuff. How do they, how are they allowed to use your facilities? And is there a price tag for those people? Because there's, there must have been 50 cars out there last weekend, all these fancy sports cars with big spoilers and all this, and zooming all over the place.
I'm not sure I can directly answer your question. I do know Curtis has a couple of car shows that he has held in the past, and they've asked to use that facility to address the car shows. The car shows, once they're finished, my understanding is they make a donation into, as a form of a scholarship for public safety and training students. So they pay back for what they're allowed to use. Now whether or not they're running around in circles, I can't speak to that.
One of those cars the other day when I drove by, it looked like he was going to roll. He was, I mean, they're out there either racing or whatever the case may be, but that is not normal activity for Southwestern Community College. And in my mind, if it's a liability problem and asphalt's that bad, those people should never be allowed to be on that parking lot. And or if they're going to be, then let them pitch in and help pay for the resurfacing of that parking lot. I mean, beautiful cars, but it's, it turns into, I mean, they have cones set up all over the place and having road course races and everything else out there.
I don't want to poke on a bruise, but CDL vehicles, commercial drivers, that's a serious need here locally, I mean nationally. Is there any other community close by that's got some kind of a CDL training course?
Haywood's looking at it. The cost is astronomical, so they partner with Caldwell Community College. And then it's what's available for trucks to come out into after they do the didactic, and then they have to do the hands-on training. Part of the concern with that, Josh, is the fact that they don't have a surface where they can run the trucks as heavy as they are.
You know, trucks need to, I mean, trucks like that could be on gravel. They don't have to be on asphalt.
Can't speak to that, because all the ones that I've seen have been on asphalt. For what purpose, I have no reason to, I mean, I can't.
Yeah, just, I'm advocating for that, just so you know. But there's a big need, go ahead.
Well, I'd interject, the D M B driver licenses did come out and tried to work with us at some point for doing C D L testing out there.
Yeah.
They looked at our surface and found it was insufficient to hold the weight of vehicles and trucks that they needed to. That's one of the reasons why we never did move forward with any C D L. And we can't do fire trucks on the track as well, because of the weight of the D M B number two.
I understand.
Mr. Schirr, the, they have offered, if there's anything repairs, the clubs do, they try to hold themselves accountable. If they cause a rut in the side, they come out there and fix it. So, you know, they're, they've been, they've been very good. I know it looks like that, but they, they have expensive cars and they're trying to take care of them when they're doing that. But they, the Highlands Sports Car Club is probably the one you've seen out there.
I've seen several.
When we talked to them, they wanted to use the track, they were using the center cross from airport in Asheville, and found this was a much better facility. We talked to them about a donation, and more than some officers who had attended Southwestern and had been killed in the line of duty, and they immediately made a $2,000 donation for scholarships in their honor. So they support that annually too. And if I get any calls from the neighbors about noise or whatever, I call the president, they'll take care of the issues on that too. But I don't, I mean, I'll be glad to have a conversation with them. Because the one thing I said, we're not doing burnouts, we're not doing donations, it's a timed event that they're trying to do on that as well.
Oh, I enjoy sitting out there on the road and watching them, I mean, they're.
We have a Corvette club coming out of Greenwill that wanted, and then there's a Porsche club out of Atlanta that comes once a year and makes a donation for scholarships.
And then you always have the residual economic value that's added to the fact that people are here from out of the county that are coming in. And so you have, there's a big picture there also, that just that we all look at.
And you say it's the Highlands Motoring Festival?
Highlands Sports Car Club.
Okay.
And then there's a Corvette club out, it's out of Greenwill, South Carolina, that comes up, and then the Porsche Club. So there's three clubs that we have used it. And then the one club will do some team driving stuff, knows it sometimes, talking about skid and imports of seatbelts, airbags, stuff like that too. So we kind of try to tie that team to some of the training too, because it benefits some of the team drivers.
Well, maybe it's a conversation that we can all have together and maybe get this resurfaced without the expense being all on the taxpayers' make account. Thank you.
Just one more question I was going to ask, is the funding, you know, in the same time we've increased this funding, start from further 2023 numbers, over this same time of the funding increase, it looks like that enrollment in Macon County's dropped pretty significantly.
It has from COVID.
Does the funding go further now? In 2019, it was 24, 22 Macon residents, and in 2022, which is the latest I could get, it was 1,827 Macon residents. So I was just wondering if that decline of about 700 there.
I'd have to look at your numbers, but if you're talking.
Does that funding go further now?
If you're talking 1,800 and some odd, are you talking with continuing education, curriculum?
Right, I'm just, the total number, yeah, I just, I didn't know.
Are those, part of that 1,800? Or are part of those 1,800 students, are they driving over the mountain going to drive to Silver? I can't answer that unless I look specifically at your numbers. My gut tells me that fundamentally, no. And the reason I say that is because an HVAC unit's an HVAC unit. If I'm running a institution or an organization and I have to have an HVAC unit, it's going to cost me to either repair it or replace it. I can shut a room off that would help save on electricity potentially, you know, things of that nature, but it's, you're talking pennies in the scheme of the large budget is also.
Decline.
Yeah, no, it has declined, but we're also now beginning to see an uptick. So our numbers are starting to come back. I think COVID is kind of, I hate to keep saying that word like everybody else, but I think it's starting to, we're starting to see an uptick in our numbers. So we're hopeful that it will continue that way, is all. I do appreciate your time, just an opportunity to share with you what I hope that you'll just have conversation taken into consideration. Give me a call if you need any questions answered.
Let me ask, let me ask.
Oh, no, I just said, thank you, sir.
Let me ask one other thing, for us as commissioners, if we make sure we look in here at your capital request detail, you got the Grove Center, then you got to your.
Public safety.
Yeah, Public Safety Training Center.
We try to break it out that way, yes, sir.
Yeah. How are we, how are you getting by with, I'm not saying it's intentional, when I see replace and repair ramps and stairs to modular units, ADA, and how are you dodging the bullet?
Well, we're just making band-aid repairs. The age, the modular units were donated by Macon County Public Schools 15 years ago.
Before I, before I came on board.
Before you came, so we had ramps built, and it's the same ramps and stairs, and we've just been making repairs since before we brought away.
I'm not picking on Jimmy Teens, but I see them in here. I see something like a fire alarm panel replacement, those type things. How are we not doing that, I guess?
I think those are a couple of the items that'll be funded this year into that $71,000 life safety, because that comes directly out of the F cap report where the deficiencies are stated, whether it's the roofing, whether it's the exit lights, things of that nature, Mr. Shields, so that's all part of.
And I believe the other day, and I was just being a dummy with it, can you share again what F cap is? I think that's of importance. I think that's of importance, but I didn't know at that time we were talking.
I, I, I can't tell you exactly what the acronym stands for, but it's our state construction office where we as a state agency can call the state construction agency and they will send someone out and do a valuation of our buildings. And they, they look at windows, they look at everything from inside out and then they do a report and let us know these are things you need to start addressing or it's not going to continue to work at some point in time. So anyway.
And I think that's what the other day when we were talking to F cap, it kind of stuck up here of importance because the state was putting of importance on it.
Right.
And again, I'll use that little word, how are we dodging these bullets?
Well, until this year, we were just not doing them, addressing them. But we just got the report a year ago also on the updated report. This report came out, I believe, two years ago, actually came out in February of '23. So we had a couple of items in last year's budget that we, we tried to put in at the last moment. But then we were able to more accurately address those life safety ADA. And then they continued down with that, Mr. Shields. So up until this time, we weren't addressing them. Not that they weren't there, it's just we weren't addressing them.
So these are county-owned properties?
State-owned.
State-owned properties.
That's makes it very challenging to understand sometimes for individuals. And that's where just the conversation of education to help people kind of field and understand. This, this for us, the Community College Law of North Carolina is what we refer to in section 115D dash 32 comes back and says, if you as a county are willing to put a extension campus, center, whatever facilities within your county, then you're responsible for the following. And the state has that as law by 115D. So it does make it sometimes confusing, is it a county facility or is it a state facility? These are state-owned facilities.
Okay, so the HVAC systems and stuff, who, who would actually identify those when they're failing? Is that, who, who handles the maintenance for the state facilities? And who recognizes those? I mean, because it sounds like you have identified the problem and the issues. Is it something that the county really has never been part of identifying these issues since it is a state-owned property?
I'm not sure that the county's been 100% going out and checking those on a routine or regular basis. I think Curtis and his team, if something goes wrong with one of the units, then a call is made to maintenance. And there's some, some confusion on that also because it's, you can read through there that the maintenance of it is the county's responsibility. So county manager has to build in money in his budget to send an HVAC person out there. If we have issues of concern for maintenance, whether it's plumbing, HVAC, windows broken or anything that's minor or major, that falls back onto the county as far as a maintenance. Just like it would be for your county buildings and facilities.
Just like this year, we approved additional money. They had identified the problem at the Grove Center. They brought the funding request in here and we approved funding outside of the budget to go towards replacing that system. So that's how it's worked, it's worked well. The, if you look, the Grove Center, I think, is the most, the highest valued property that the county owns. The highest valued building that we own. So it is a, a very nice building that, that we've taken great pride in.
I was talking about COVID money and everybody curses COVID, but that was a cash cow for a lot of institutions.
No longer there, is it?
Of the, of the money that you received or Southwestern Community College received, was any of that used to address these longstanding deficiencies and capital issues?
Yes.
But not enough to handle?
Not enough to handle everything that, you know, we're a small institution. We didn't get the millions of dollars that some of the larger universities got and some of the larger community colleges got. But we tried to address as many of those issues as we could with funding. But we also managed it with resources, human resources, to make sure that we were trying to save people so.
Benefits and benefits.
So we could get through, well, not necessarily. We didn't do pay raises or any of that kind of stuff with any of that money. Because you got to remember when that money's gone, it's gone. Reoccurring funding's got to come from somewhere, right? So I'm just, I'm just telling you, you know. I, so my team, myself and my team managed it from a standpoint, it's non-recurring funding. We'll take on projects that we can take on. If there's a program that needs support to, to give it a boost to get us through COVID and hopefully make it continue to grow, we'll use those funds for that. If it doesn't work, then that program goes away. We lost probably at least four or five different programs from civil engineering for, you know, DOT is dying for people to come out and be surveyors. We can't find people to take that program, so. A B Tech closed theirs, we closed ours, Blue Ridge opened theirs. And I think they've got like three or four, five or six people in that program. So, and that, those are great jobs, 60, 70, $80,000 a year. Two, three years later, they're in the six figure. I'd love to have, we just pushed it on pause, we didn't kill it. And so we can always bring it back if we need to. So yeah, we managed it from the standpoint of what we're going to do to keep the institutions open also. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that. Thank you for what you all do, good, Curtis, and the rest of your team.
And also I think you have a good relationship with our legislators and.
We do, and yeah. Sometimes it's good enough to where it comes back and maybe. I won't go any further on that one, but yeah, it, it also helps create a partnership and collaboration between the county and, and the college then also. So we, we've got a $10 million indoor firing range that we'll be hopefully designing this summer and over the fall and some construction projects on the Jackson campus then also.
Could you introduce your guest there?
Amanda Millicent is a grad student from North Carolina State University. She's working on her doctoral program. I've had the honor and privilege to mentor her for the last two years as field work experience. She is currently employed at Guilford Technical Community College. And she comes out, I guess, in the last two years, she's been out here four or five times, trying to take her to these types of meetings to see the connection, how they operate, the conversations, and just put her in front of people and have conversations, so. And of course, you know Curtis.
Does Mr. Dad will have things he wants to share with us?
No, as always, we appreciate the support the county gives us on an ongoing basis and that. And, you know, we are a part of the community, we are a part of Macon County. It's the biggest thing that I want you to know. I mean, 99, over 99% of our public safety professionals train with us. And it's our job to make sure that we do the best thing we can for them too. And we have great working relationship. Town of Franklin, you know, Franklin Fire Department, it's nothing that we can't call, Macon County Sheriff's Department, Warren Cave and his team too. It's a constant teamwork that we have to serve our citizens. And we have the honor of serving those who serve as well. And being a lifelong resident of Macon County, I understand the importance to support our education, K through 12 and higher education and what that is. And I know it's tough and all the county operations that you do and, and managing that in and of itself. You know, I see some gray hairs and Mr. Roland there that weren't there a few years ago. But it's a tough job and you can't please everybody. We're just trying to do what's right. And, you know, as long as you do what's right, you can lay your head down at night and you don't have to work.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you for the information.
Finger pointing time again.
It's not the job, Curtis. He's six, five years, he's, he's got about five or six kids.
Mike, since you and I talked, I'm going to point at you to introduce your, the mayor and whoever, whoever's going to speak to us.
Is there something you want to talk about? Not really. I mean, I will.
Mike, you should stand over this side here. Kind of wants us to sit in one of those seats.
Welcome, welcome to it.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you for what you do for our county. I know very well that sometimes an often unappreciated service that you do, people don't understand the issues you have to deal with and the decision that you have to make. And they're not always popular. And I don't have to tell you that. Thank you for your time tonight. So we're just here as representing the town of Franklin, the town board and our fire department. Our, our fire department is not just the town of Franklin, you know, it's a fire district. It covers a lot of area outside, outside of our town limits. As a matter of fact, Chief Orman gave us a report last night at our board meeting showing the number of calls and so forth that we had. And the number of calls actually outside of the city limits are much higher than what we have inside of town. And the fact of the matter is, and he's got statistics, I'll let him quote those to you if he'd like to do that. But out of the total number of calls throughout the county, Franklin Fire and Rescue does a major share of them. That's because most of the people are right here and the roads are right here and the accidents are right here. And so you're going to have a higher volume. It's important to make sure when they call the county 911 center, that somebody's able to respond. And we're able to do that with the town of Franklin because we have 10 full-time firemen who are there ready to crack that truck up and head out as soon as the call comes in. And oftentimes our firemen are on the scene even before EMS arrives sometimes because they're, they're there. But a couple of years ago, we, we started looking at the need to, to replace equipment. You know, we have some, some fire trucks, a pumper and a tanker. And we really need to replace those. And they still run. I mean, if it was my own personal fire truck, I'd probably just keep on driving like I do my 1978 Ford. But they have to be certified and approved by the state in order to put in the fire service. And they'll always stay long enough. And so sometimes they reach the age or the hours or the miles on there when they have to be replaced. The problem is now after COVID, to get a fire truck in this country, it takes you almost two years after you put the order in to get it. And the minimum cost on a truck like we're looking at is over a million dollars. That's hard for a small town or a small county to be able to afford. And so we, 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 we looked at it last year, discussed it with the budget and the fire chief and the, and the fire department and with our town manager about what it would take in order to acquire those two vehicles that are needed by the fire department. And of course, you all know, we went through a tax revaluation last year, which was a lot of fun for everybody. Not everybody, but some people. But I'm recalling my days as a tax collector and a tax supervisor, and I know how that works too. But we, we looked at, at adjusting the tax rate last year during revaluation enough to be able to cover the cost of operation, the cost of repairing, replacing these vehicles. And we ended up with revenue neutral tax rate, which is what the board of commissioners did. And most, most people are not aware of that all fire departments throughout the state that are in fire tax districts, the fire tax has to be approved by the board of county commissioners. Can't be approved by the town, even though the town operates in somewhat of a departmental priority with the town, with the fire department. But all the money to operate the Franklin Fire Rescue comes from the fire tax. It covers inside and outside of the city. And so we looked at it this year and, and our chief has presented a budget and our manager has put that in, the proposed budget. We had a public hearing on the town's budget last night. Nobody showed up to speak about it, but part of that budget includes a slight increase in the fire tax in order to pay for the continuing cost of operation as well as replacement of the vehicles that are needed for fire safety. And so we're coming back this year and it's in the budget request this year that Mr. Roland has. And I think the tax, estimated tax rate to supply all these needs this next year would be seven cents. I think it's over five cents now, but it'd be around seven cents. And that would put us in position to be able to continue to fund this. Some people ask, well, why don't, why don't the town put some more money into it? Well, that argument and that, that discussion has come up several times during our town board meetings. And the fact of the matter is, if you live in town, you also live in the county. And as you live in town, you get the other benefit of getting to pay town taxes as well. And so you're paying fire tax whether you live inside or outside of town. If we take money out of the general fund of the town and put it into the fire department, we basically, in some cases, penalize those people who live in town because they're paying twice for the same service that people outside the town get by paying their fire tax. So there's an argument on, on that side about that. So total fire department, as I say, is totally operated as like the other fire departments in the county based on the fire tax. I was serving as county manager here many, many years ago when the fire tax went into, went into place. At that time, it was, it was based on, only on property that had an improvement on it. You may remember that, some of you do, Paul probably does. And, and it was at a maximum of, what was it, $120 or something like that? And so that was when it first got started. Of course, it had to go through the general assembly, several changes. And now it's a regular fire tax like most of the municipalities, counties throughout the state have. But I'm just here, we're just here tonight to support the fire department's request to have enough money to operate, to provide the life safety issues that we talked about here earlier, to protect the lives and the property and provide for the safety of the people in our jurisdiction, inside and outside of the city limits in our fire district. So on behalf of the town and the town board, if the entire town board was here, they would say that they unanimously support this request from our fire department through the board consider adjusting the tax rate in order to be able to do what they would like to do this year. So we have with us tonight, council member Mike Lewis, the good-looking guy with the hat over here. And beside him is our illustrious town manager, Amy Owens, who does a fantastic job. And so, and then our chief, Chief Orman, Chief Ben Orman is here as well. And one of our other board members, Mr. Culpepper is here to support us as well. And I would like to give any of them the opportunity to share anything with the board that you would like to hear at this time. So Mike, if you want to step forward, I'll let you. And I'll, I'll tell you this, on behalf of Mr. Lewis here, Mr. Lewis has an ongoing issue with kidney stones. And he is probably dealing with one right now. So if he acts a little bit different than he normally does, there's a good reason for that, Mr. Lewis.
We understand.
And I'm not going to talk as long as Jack, so you're not going to have to worry about that. He didn't talk. I'm going to start out by saying that I don't like taxes any more than anybody else. And I'm going to stand here and tell you, in my tenure as a town councilman, two years ago, I voted against a tax increase and I was extremely happy to vote for a tax decrease last year. So I'm not all about taxes. Second of all, last year, we, we put in an order for, for one of those fire trucks that Mayor Horton talked about and it's over a million dollars. And to, to be able, because we didn't have the, the fire tax where we needed it last year, our taxpayers put forth $225,000, a quarter of a million dollars to help fund the deposit for that fire truck. So there's 10 of us standing here right now. So what, let's say we build a, some little neighborhood out, it's not a town, it's unincorporated, it's just us. We want to buy, build, hey, let's build us a fire truck so we, one of our houses catches fire. Only four of us pay for it, the other six don't. That's what we're looking at here. 4,000 people subsidized a fire truck, part of a fire truck, 10,000 people that do not live in town and do not pay taxes. So I just want you to think about that and you're going to hear from other people tonight. So that was, that was the big thing I wanted you all to talk about. And I've heard several of you over the years talk about fairness to the taxpayers. It doesn't get much more unfair than that situation. So just want you all to think about that, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, David.
Gentlemen, ladies, I didn't want to talk, but I guess I will. I've done a lot of stupid things in my life, but running into a burning building is not one of them. So I'm not an expert on fire departments, what they need, if they need a new truck, if they don't need a new truck. Chief keeps telling me and has been telling me for three years that. Chief keeps telling me, and has been telling me for three years, that we need this stuff. I actually voted against the town spending the $200,000 last year to subsidize the fire department because I didn't think it was fair for the 4,000 in-town residents to subsidize the much larger fire district. Because I don't think it's fair, I think the fire district should be able to pay for its own way. If you need political cover, like, you can blame me, that's fine. You can say that I said this needs to be done, because I do think it needs to be done. I'm, I'm trusting chief on this, that we need what we need. And if you don't want to fund us, which is obviously your prerogative, I'd just ask you to tell us, how do you see us budgeting this? Like, send us some guidance, how do you want us to do this? If you don't want to fund the, the increase that we need to cover the equipment that we need, help us make sense of it. Help us figure out a way to move forward to where the people that need this coverage are getting the appropriate coverage. And that may be a long-term conversation that takes years about redistricting, but I'm fine with having that conversation. But right now, there's a need that I believe, and we're up here asking you guys for your blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Morning.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, afternoon.
Evening, afternoon, whatever.
We don't want it to be morning, yeah.
I just want to try and put things into a real perspective for you. Mayor talked about the number of calls and how many we run, all those sorts of things. At scale, chart at the top breaks down the call distribution for last year. Now, that doesn't include Highlands and Nantahala, this is our surrounding departments that we serve with. The average number of emergency, emergency responses in our county for the average fire department is 335. Last year, we ran 1,925. That's almost six times the amount of emergencies that everybody else is running. And when you break it down as to how much it costs to run an emergency response, the average cost of an emergency response in the county is $1,183. We're doing it for almost half at $620. But yet, we're offering and supplying a superior level of service that's not provided anywhere else in the county. The budget I submitted was for a seven cents tax balanced at that. If you do give us this tax increase that we desperately need, our cost per call will still only be $915 per call, well below the average cost that it's costing the average citizen in this community for an emergency. And for many years, these fire departments, ours included, have been operating in a reactive mode. We get to the point where we can't pay the bills no more, and we have to come and beg for money, and we get enough to pay the bills, and that covers this year, and then next year inflation happens. The fire department's a business, just like many of you run. We need to be operating in a proactive manner. Looking forward at Franklin Fire Rescue, what's that look like for us? We ordered one pumper. I still need to order a tanker. That's $650,000 if I order it today. Next year, it'll be $800,000. In the last four years, the cost of a fire truck's gone up 64%. That's inflation. Beyond that, just like every other department in this county, volunteer turnout is decreasing every day. We rely on our volunteers to supplement the full-time staff we have. So the next step in our growth to meet the demands that's put on us by the system is to hire a fourth person. Right now, we currently run three per shift. We will need to add a fourth sooner than later. But before I can do that, we're at operating capacity of our current station. So before I can get the money to add personnel, I'm going to have to spend two to three million dollars to upgrade our building that was built in 1985, to expand it to accommodate the growth that we're going to need in our future. So that seven cents helps us start being proactive for the future of the growth that's coming for this department. I just would appreciate your support on this. And I'm open to any questions you may have about the numbers before you.
Chief, I can, as I've stated many times, I am retired from fire service, and I joined the fire department as a volunteer, and, and I served 21 and a half years as a volunteer, and I fought every step of the way of any pain. And ultimately, I lost it. I believe Highlands Fire Department was the last department to agree to go to this tax base as long as the tax revenue was, that was collected, would return to the district. Highlands has the lowest fire tax rate there is. And I have a few questions for you.
Okay.
You say you ran 1,925 calls. How many of those calls were actually fire calls? And how many of them were medical calls, and how many of them were off the law? Because I pulled this record, and it seems to me like the last count that I had, almost 1,400 of those calls were first responder calls and medical calls.
We average approximately 75% as emergency medical calls. Yes, sir. As do most everyone else.
Okay. And also, and I'm not sure how it works down here, I know in Highlands, when we had a first, or a fire call, a structure fire, we had Scaly Mountain as our mutual aid company and Casserwood and Satola. And if it really needed, it depends on what side of Highlands it was, we were, I bring the call site, there's been a few calls that you guys have had in Franklin that every department in Macon County were involved in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So through this process, you just completed a substation, did you not?
It's being completed as we speak. Through money we got from the state.
All right. And it's out on the Silver Road.
Correct, across from Franklin Ford.
Are you aware that, well, you probably don't, but I own a house on Echo Valley. And, and I can almost stand on the porch of that house and hit the roof of Mountain Valley Fire Department, but I'm in Franklin district.
Right.
Now. So that tells me that the Mountain Valley Fire Department has to travel through your district to get to their district.
They were.
So therefore, what, I mean, I get it, I have all the respect in the world for firefighters, and I like what Mr. Culpepper says, you can't pay me enough money to run into a burning building. I have a T-shirt on the back of it that says, "Nobody can pay me to burn it, run into a burning building. I volunteer to do it." And, and through this whole process, and I can speak for Highlands, and I've said it before, you have paid staff and you have volunteers. Well, then the mentality of some of the volunteers is, we've got paid guys up there, I'm not going. There's some friction in these volunteer fire departments because of the pay, and I'm not saying it's in Franklin, I know it's in Highlands, because I communicate well. And I also know that some of my team members that I was on there with that are still there are stating now that we're going to paid staff, their input is no longer needed, that it's the fire chief, it's the assistant chief, and it's the town manager that makes all these decisions. And, and they don't even have their normal business meetings any longer. And so it seems to me like in these fire calls, and you guys are, I mean, I see you all the time out there, and, and I'm grateful for the job that y'all do. I miss firefighting, but I signed up to serve, I didn't sign up to make a living. And you're right, volunteerism in fire service is dying. And that's why last year, we talked about eventually, we're going to have to have a full-paid fire service, if we're going to have fire service, and we have to offer fire service. So your calls, I would assume, and I hate to do that, but those are mutual aid calls as well, are they not?
Yes, that's all total responses.
Okay.
And on those mutual aid, you mentioned aid coming to help us, and they do, it's automatic when there's a structure fire, two additional departments are paged out. When we go mutual aid to the surrounding departments around us, at least 75% of the time, if you stand in the front yard and see who goes into the burning building to put out the fire, it's Franklin. We're having to supplement because other departments don't have the staffing, the volunteers aren't showing up. So we're not just fighting our fires, we're putting out other people's fires as well. In many instances, when I roll up, I'm asked to take command and run their fire scene because they don't have command staff present to run their own call. So the, the money that we're asking to support doesn't just support Franklin, it's the whole surrounding area.
And I, and I get it, I mean, you have two paid firemen on staff.
True.
Well, it's pretty much useless until the third man, the fourth man comes in, because I went on a structure fire one time, I had the engineer out there, and I was on the end of a three-inch hose bouncing all over the ground trying to, so.
We run three, and most everyone else runs one part-timer, which means a driver can get a fire truck to the scene, and then there's nobody to fight fire. And, and we're happy to go in to assist, we all serve the community under one mission. But that cost is expensive, and we're doing it a whole lot cheaper than everybody else in the county, so we're just asking for more to, to help supplement a cost.
Then we talk about the insurance there, and it's my understanding, I called the insurance company, you guys are four rating?
We are three.
Three rating, okay. And Mountain Valley Fire Department is a five.
Okay.
So I checked with the insurance company with my house over on Echo Valley, if that house went from Franklin Fire District to Mountain Valley Fire District, what are my insurance savings? And they told me it was zero, because there's no break after five. It, it, it's there.
Okay.
If you have a Class 5.4, in your case, a three, there's, there's no reduction in your insurance rates. So I guess my point is, why would that, why would we not somehow shrink your district to help offset these calls and, and expand the other ones' districts?
You can do that to a detriment to those we serve, because everyone else who you take out of our district will go to a lesser level of care. They will then call 911 and see a fire truck pull up in their yard with a driver standing there waiting for someone to come fight fire. Instead of now in our district, when they call 911, they know three people are showing up, ready to fight fire, perform extrication, rescue, whatever needed to be done without having to wait on anybody. So they would suffer from a lesser service.
So, okay, but that's only in your district.
Right, well, you talked about shrinking our district, yes.
Right, but if Mountain Valley actually had my house, and the fire department is sitting stone throw away, then your staff would not respond to that if it was in Mountain Valley. So I understand it's not your district, but at the same time, the timing is the same because if, if I have a structure fire over at my house on Mountain Valley, or in Echo Valley, and that pager goes off, I can almost, almost guarantee you that somebody from that fire station would be at my house before you.
Correct, you're on the outskirts of our limit. But again, you'd have one person with a truck that's not capable of doing anything else other than sitting there.
I mean, I, I, I get it, I mean, you guys are busy, you're doing a fantastic job.
And as to why they're on our district, that was a decision made long before I got here, I don't know why they were allowed to build a fire station as close to the district line. I think back then, there were some hopes of them expanding their district, but they didn't have the support to do it.
So what would it look like if Franklin Fire Department became a municipal fire department solely, and the town of Highlands became a municipal fire department for the town of Highlands, and then the county paged for fire service outside of city limits? Because it says, let me see where my, my letter is here that, that I read. I believe it was, no, I'm looking for the, the letter that we received, I believe it was from the town manager.
Yes, sir, that was the initial request and signed by the city council members.
We all want to provide the best services for the citizens of Franklin and Macon County, but not being able to incorporate increases in cost due to a decision made by another governmental entity is not fair to the Franklin Fire Rescue. It feels like a punishment for having a professional fully-staffed department. So if you have been keeping up with the capital improvement projects that this Board of Commissioners is facing, and trying to hit our taxpayers with increases, and I watch, I watch around the world, all this economy and stuff, and it's looking ugly, and I, and I understand you need equipment and stuff, but maybe, just maybe, if that district were to shrink, I don't even know how many volunteer, or how many members Mountain Valley has, but it seems to me like they're fully staffed, the last I heard, and then Nantahala's overloaded, and I don't even think they pay anything per call, and that was a big discussion. Anytime you put money in anything, it becomes a nightmare. And, and so I'm just asking that question based on this.
You could shrink.
Paragraph here, as to you guys are being punished by this Board of Commissioners by not extending this, raising this fire tax for our taxpayers in Macon County. And so I think the conversation probably should be had to look at shrinking the district or, or possibly going in and letting the two municipal fire departments be governed by the government, your fire department being governed by the town of Franklin and Highlands Fire Department being governed by the town of Franklin.
We can shrink our district to town proper, and the town can set their own fire tax rate. So then they're not, we're not relying on anybody else to set our income. But you do that, two things are going to happen. Every, the 10,000 people we serve outside of our town proper, their services will be diminished. On top of that, all that district will have to be absorbed by our surrounding partnering departments, and you will be overtaxing them in a situation where they're already struggling to keep up now. And you would be adding more geographical location, more population, more calls for service when they're barely keeping the doors open now. So it's a, it's a lose-lose if we do that. And the reason I presented these numbers and the large disparity in the amount of emergencies run and the cost per call is, I'm asking y'all to no longer look at us as just a volunteer fire department. The days of Franklin Volunteer Fire Department are gone. We are still supplemented by volunteers, and we depend on them, but we are a full-time career department, and we're asking you to treat us as such.
Oh, just one more question, I'm, I'm curious to know, every year, there's two departments that sends out letters asking for donations, and your department is one of them.
Correct.
How is that, how is that paid? Are you using taxpayers' money to send the same taxpayers a letter asking for donation? Or are you raising the funds somewhere and using those? And also, the second part of that question is, how much money did you actually raise, and what did you do with the money?
Each year, it varies. Last year, I want to say we raised around 20, 22,000. That money is used to typically replace aging and broken equipment, anything from fire boots and helmets to pagers and radios. This year, we, the executive board, all of my officers, elected to roll that money because we know we've bought a new fire truck, and when that new fire truck gets here in two and a half years, it's going to cost money to equip it. and a half years, it's going to cost money to equip it. So we're banking that money, so we'll have that money to purchase the equipment needed for the new fire truck. And we also raise additional funds. If you've ever been on the event on Main Street, we're set up handing out literature on fire safety and home safety and also selling merchandise, trying to raise more money and do everything that we can to scrape every penny together to keep the doors open and keep supplying a superior level of service.
I have a question for you, Chief. Why do you feel like the volunteer are declining?
You can't get people to work now when they're getting paid. Volunteerism across the country is diminishing in every aspect, let alone in an industry where you're asking people to go in for free and risk their life.
Now, for your department, do you...let me make sure I understand this. Do you respond to more calls in town or outside of town limits?
It's about 50/50.
50/50? You know, I feel for everybody involved because honestly, you know, we brag about having the lowest tax rate so much, but at the same time, you always hear, "We want more, we want more." And the problem that people are not understanding is, you can't have more without having money coming in. And it really doesn't make sense. It doesn't add up.
Correct.
I feel for all you guys involved in this because I go out on some of these calls with you guys as well, and I love to see how all these departments work so well together. It's like a well-oiled machine. But it's going to become increasingly more difficult, especially without having the right kind of equipment to be able to serve people.
Right.
So I don't know that the public is always fully aware of what you guys are up against, you know, in the way that you're trying to serve and your inability to have like the right equipment to be able to take care of the jobs that you want to take care of. I'm pretty certain everybody in this county would hate to call 911 and first of all, not have anybody there to answer.
Right.
Right? I would think that everybody would hate it if somebody would answer and they need an emergency call to have a response that says, "We're sorry, we don't have any units to send out."
You say that, just last week, we had to respond to another district's call. It was a motor vehicle accident, vehicle upside down in the creek. We had to go. They only had one person show up while you got someone trapped in a car underwater. So it happens.
So I'm against every tax increase just like anybody else, but at the same time, I'm not foolish enough to think that I should ask for more in my community without realizing the money's got to come from somewhere.
Right.
It's got to come from somewhere.
And we're still doing business at a cheaper cost than everybody else, or than the average, rather, sorry.
I understand, yeah, very true. I just appreciate and I value what you guys do, and I know it's what you guys are up against. What you guys are up against, it's pretty rough, man.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Hello.
Commissioners, I just want to add, part of this is, the town can't pass their budget unless you guys pass yours because you set the tax rate for the fire districts. I don't want to have to come back next year and do this again, again, and again, knowing that I have a fire truck that's already been ordered, that we still have to pay for, when we could be proactive, go back to the seven cents that you granted us two years ago. I mean, I get that valuations went up between then and now, but seven cents is still seven cents. For a $200,000 house, that's $35. So, you know, the letter that was actually written by the executive board, not by the town manager, and signed and sent in unanimously about this. You have the opportunity, I mean, let's just be blunt, blame it on the town. It's the town asking for this tax. It's seven cents. You guys don't have to answer for that. Let them come and talk to us. We're the ones that'll have to justify where that money goes, how it's spent, the things that people get for that seven cents. Yes, part of them are in town, but the majority of those individuals are out of town. And my door is always open, the chief's door is always open. The town council serves as the board of directors for Franklin Fire and Rescue. They unanimously supported this, and they just would respectfully request that you would honor that for us, at least for this year, until if we have to revisit the districting, it becomes something to keep looking at in years to come. But for this year, knowing the purchase that has already been made, knowing the burden that's already been placed on the in-town taxpayers to include that additional $200,000 just to get the down payment on this vehicle, not to order the two that we need, but just the one, the request is respectfully to go back to that seven cents. That means approximately $397,000. Yes, that is a big number, and yes, County Manager Roland has worked very hard to get his budget down below what it was last year, and props for that. You have done a fantastic job in all your budget prep. But I can't pass a budget for the town, and we can't move forward into the next year without your help. And that's what it is. It's your help. It's not a contest, it's not us versus them, it's we're asking for help, just like nonprofits do, just like any other thing does. We support you guys and your activities, you support us and ours, and that's all we're asking for, is just that continued support, at least for this year, and give us the opportunity to look at alternatives in the future.
Hey, me, I would say, like, I completely support you guys, you know, in this. I just wish there was a better way, like, more ways to explain in better detail for everyone to understand why that increase would be necessary. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, and I get it from this perspective, but I just, I guess, don't have the ways of being able to explain in better detail why this would be so helpful.
Five trucks, multiple calls, start-stop, start-stop, start-stop. It wears the vehicles out.
We just had to...
Okay.
One of our trucks, one of the medical cars, 30,000 miles on it. We just had to spend $7,000 to replace a turbo. Because these trucks get run so much harder than your personal trucks, and it's maintenance and fuel and stop and go, like she said.
Equipment you're replacing with the trucks, you are replacing some trucks, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And are they at the end of their life?
They are well past...
The trucks, they're...
Based on age.
We have one truck that is 31 years old that is still in service.
Another truck that's 29 years old. NFPA requires fire trucks to be placed in reserve status after 15 years and completely retired at 25 years. And we were running stuff at times, frontline response for a 30-year-old truck.
Let me ask you a question. I'm not totally familiar with the criteria that we ask our departments, all the fire departments, to go through when they're requesting additional funds. And from what I just heard you say there, you've already approached your people that you're responding to. That's part of the criteria of getting approval or okaying the, I'm going to say, seven cents. You've already gone through your, I believe I heard you say there, you've gone through a committee or something?
The board of directors is the town council for the town of Franklin, the board of directors of the fire department.
And they've agreed to this immediately.
They unanimously sent you the letter in March.
And that's one of the criterias we ask each community to go through if they're going to ask for an increase, to make sure you involve your community and for them to support it. And maybe like Mr. Antoine's talking about here, understand why you're asking that increase, and I think you've done that.
That was the attempt, sir.
Yeah, I think you've done that, and I want to say thank you.
Yeah, one more thing. I added up all the budget requests for the 11 fire departments in Macon County. If my math is correct, it was $7,582,907 for the 11 fire departments. And I also stated this some time ago, if, you know, we're getting close to, if not there already, of running a full page fire service in Macon County. And I don't know how far we go with this before, you know, and that's from what you're saying, you're going to someone else's district that don't have the manpower and you're controlling and you're taking that scene over. And that's grateful. And so the real conversation, it sounds like, is going to be paying fire service in Macon County. And I don't want, I think it's this tax money has, in my mind, has ruined the fire service in Macon County. And I don't mean that in a negative way, it's just there's too much friction and I never remember the pager going off. It does not have a response to that call.
Times have changed since then. If it wasn't for that fire tax money right now, there would be no fire service in Macon County, I can promise you that. It's the only thing keeping them afloat. It's not just the old days where we sell barbecue and buy a fire truck and everybody runs. Those days are long gone.
Boot drives and all that other stuff is over.
Correct.
And I don't disagree that there needs to be that conversation about the various districts and stuff, but for this year, this is, again, like I said, this is what we're asking for for this year, to get through this, to have these other conversations, to move those discussions forward, but to meet the obligations and things that we have. Had we not been lucky enough to get a $400,000 appropriation from the state to finish that fire station, that would be additional debt service and everything that we would be coming to you and saying, "We need additional tax money for." So we're looking for grants always, we're always trying to do what we can to get our legislators involved, do firehouse subgrants, I mean, just anything and everything we can think of, but I don't disagree that we need to have that conversation in the future.
Why would you order a fire truck without knowing how you was going to pay for it?
Well, we had fund balance to appropriate from the fire department. However, we got a much better deal if we put a larger down payment down. It saved us over $65,000 to put a larger down payment down.
So you could have paid for it out of fund balance, the whole truck?
The debt service would have allowed us to do the one truck, but not the two.
And our budget took additional hits that we could not control from dental group, life, health insurance going up, state retirement requirements, 401K, lots of different variables in there that we don't control, as you all know. Some of them were substantial.
If this depends, our vote depends on your going forward with your budget, are you...we need to do this tonight? Will you go on with your budget or...
Do it next week.
Yes, I say, you guys have to do yours.
We're just going to hold until you vote, I guess, next week.
Okay, okay. That's what I need to put on my notes. Thank you.
Managers, there another way to fund part of that or all of that without a tax increase? On, instead of raising that to seven cents, they're asking for a one-time help and then have a conversation. Is there an alternative measure to help fund their needs without the tax increase?
Multiply that times 11.
No?
If you set a precedent.
I mean, it is, I mean...
I don't disagree.
I think with the structure we're in today, I mean, with having 11 districts and we'd have contracts...
Correct.
With each district, and the contracts contemplate how great pushes to support their needs.
That's definitely going a step beyond what has historically been done, and I think that's something that the board needs to consider and take very seriously because, you know, if you do it that way, I would say other departments would be requesting a similar...
And the tax rate we're asking for, there's already three departments in the county that have a tax rate of seven cents for hires, so it's not anything unheard of in this county.
The only question I really have is the feedback from the community. I mean, have you given adequate time for public hearings for people to at least be vocal about this?
I balance my budget based on the seven cents, and it was presented to the council. That budget was published, just like y'all have to do. As the mayor said, we had public sessions for it, and there was no objection. There was no one that showed up to speak on behalf of the budget, but it was advertised and published, yes, sir.
We just appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we leave, can I just say one last question?
Oh, yeah, we love hearing from you.
Nothing dirty, though.
You've been around for a while, like Mr. Paul there and Gary and so forth, and remember a time when the town and the county did not work together. You remember that? I think we've turned that corner now. I think we're on a good route to find ways that we can work together, that we can use the resources that the town has and the county can use the resources they have, we can work together to provide for the needs of all the people, because we are elected to serve the citizens of Macon County, whether they live in town or out of town. We appreciate your time, we appreciate your courtesy, and we hope you give us favorable consideration as you go through your budget process.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
See you, Dave.
I got one last comment, because I froze up and forgot what I was talking about earlier. It's actually, we didn't just subsidize the $200,000 last year, we actually traded a piece of in-town property that was probably worth about $200,000 for the property to build the substation. So over the last, like, three years, the fire department's been subsidized about $800,000, $400,000 by the town taxpayers, and $400,000 by the state. So we're already, we're already, like, pretty far behind, like, this would help us get caught up. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Why would you build a substation within a mile of another fire station?
That's an excellent question, and from my understanding, is Corbin Cove area did not have fire service. They were a seven or a nine or something like that. And this board, county commissioners, not in this incarnation, made a deal with the town, because I think the town was better equipped than Echo Valley or Mountain Valley to cover the district. So the town, this is before my time, too, the town made a promise to the county that we would build a substation that would cover Holly Springs, Corbin Cove, that area. Then the Chippewa, where they are, the town traded a piece of property to get the piece of property behind the NPNL building, the old NPNL building, and we built the substation. That's how we got here. I don't know how many of us were involved in that process, but I think that's how we ended up with an entirely different district fire station within our district. And I think Mountain Valley may have a higher rate than ours. I don't know that.
It is, but when you add, if that district there expanded and you brought in those revenues, then their rate could actually drop.
Okay.
Because they have the lowest budget, I think, of any fire station in our district in Macon County. And so if you expand theirs, then they bring in the values of all that property, and so therefore, their rate could probably decrease and have the same revenue. And then Franklin's district would decrease and less the burden on the Franklin Fire Service. And so I think it is a very, at this point in the game, I think it's a conversation that is going to have to be had.
No, I agree, and I appreciate where your heart is, looking out for taxpayers. I mean, this is tough. I mean, spending other people's money is tough. I have objected to spending town taxpayer money twice to subsidize the district, so I get where you're at. It's tough. But yes, I welcome any and all conversations about it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dave. Warren, do you have, by listening to, do you have anything that you would like to add or speak about or...
Defend.
I mean, you're the one, you're the one that...
You want to defend yourself publicly?
Please do.
So, yes, I will agree with you, Warren. They provide a valuable service. They are consistently one of the most operationally organized departments that we have. We've had no operational efficiencies with them, so I do agree with that. I understand the dilemma that you're in, I understand the dilemma that they're in. The seven cents obviously goes above the revenue neutral that we can...
The seven cents obviously goes above the revenue neutral that we calculated last year, which puts them in the top four of the rates that we have. To answer the question about the substation, yes, he is correct. Mr. Cole Pepper was correct. The reason that is there, Corbin Road, Rabbit Creek, some of that area was in a protection class 10. Berry Cove up in there was in protection class 10. So when Franklin came and asked for an increase, which I believe would have been in 2017 or 18, I can't remember the exact year, we pretty much tied a stipulation to the increase that we will give you an increase this year, but we want a substation or some answer to bring those people in that area down to at least a protection class 9 so they can buy insurance. We don't pick where they put the building. We don't have anything to do with that. So that's how that building ended up there. They found property. It met the specs on the distance. That's why it's there. Mountain Valley's fire department, I'm one of the few people that was here when all that's come about. Basically, what happened was Franklin had an existing district and those folks on Watauga Vista and out in that area had no protection. So they wanted to do a fire department. So that district was established for everything that was not in Franklin's area. And the only property that they could find was at that particular place right there. So that's why the building, there's no, there's no, nothing with the state of North Carolina that says that your building can't be in somebody else's district. So that's the reason that building was there. I have been a big proponent for years. Matter of fact, the fire study we did in 2017, I wrote a recommendation in there that we presented to the board that I thought it was asinine. One government had to come ask another government to set a tax rate or ask how to spend money or, and what our recommendation was back then was to take the service district, which is what the service fee is collected off of. That's established by you all. That's a general statute 153A provision that you establish that through a process. When we did that, we did it to cover municipal limits. We did everything at one time. When the fire fee that Jack talked about had to go away because it was deemed illegal, because it would only tax folks up to a certain dollar figure. So it didn't matter if you had a $2 million house or a $200,000 house. When you capped out, you capped out, which is what you can't do. What we probably should have done and what we could go back and do is cut out the municipal limits out of the service district area. The only issue is at that point, the money for the city limits for the fire production would have to come out of the town's general fund, out of their tax rate. And then we would set, we, you as the board, would set the rate for the area in the rural section. To me, I like that because they can set their rate for inside the city limits. The voters inside the city limits, they have to answer to them. You set the rate for the rural area, the voters out there, you have to answer to those folks. It makes it a little more complicated because you got two sets of money. But that would solve some of these issues. Now, the problem is you can't snap your fingers and do that. There's a statutory process whereby you all would have to request us to prepare a report and a resolution. You got to have the resolution presented, just like any other resolution. You have to notify the people within the area by mail. Then you have to have a public hearing. And if I'm not mistaken, the statute says it can only take effect on the beginning of a fiscal year. So that's out for now. The best you could do on that would be July of 2025. The other thing that you should consider, and we've talked about this, and this was in our fire study, we always get into these questions about rates. Well, neighbor rate is 10 cents, for example, and other fire department rate 7 cents. And who's getting the best money or the service for the money? Or am I getting the same service for the money? Here is my thought that you all need to think about, and we put it in the fire study. I don't think we need one service fee rate for the entire county. But I think we could do three. I think we could set a rate for, we do a service district, for example, for Highlands and Scaly Mountain areas. We set a rate for that area. I think we do a service district for the Nana Hala area. We set a rate for that area. And I think we could do a service district area for the general Franklin proper area and you set a rate. And you collect X amount of dollars off that. And then you would have to develop a formula, a funding formula. You would have to figure out some way so that those folks could collect. You would grant X amount of dollars to this department, X amount of dollars to that department. But what happens is you cut out all of this discussion about the neighbors paying different tax rates. And I would say three because you have almost three distinct geographical and economic regions in Macon County. So you don't want to necessarily lump all those together and try and do a tax rate. You'll be back into the same conversations you have with Highlands. You know, if Highlands pays 30 cents and I live in Burnet Town and I pay 30 cents, Highlands is probably paying a bigger chunk of our tax burden than the folks on Burnet Town just because of the values there. But you could probably split that out into threes, develop a formula. Then maybe you could have the funds set aside that if you have that special appropriation for something. I'm against special appropriations. We've been asked before, can we pull $100,000 out of the general fund or the fund balance to pay for something? And you'll have that issue that Paul mentioned, is you'll have 10 more folks that'll come up next year and say, I want my stuff. So with all that being said, the system is changing. We have struggled. We have had departments that we've had, we never thought we would have to deal with, that have been on the cusp of being short on manpower or just struggling sometimes with no fault of their own to maintain. And I honestly don't know that that's going to get any better very quickly in the future. So I think the best thing you mentioned tonight was we need to start having those discussions and we need to plan for the five year, the 10 years down the road because if we don't, we will be in a situation. Any questions?
I remember we started Burnet Town. We got $25,000 from the county. We build a building and ran a fire department out there. And it just, it morphs.
It does.
And it really truly upsets me as a taxpaying citizen when I get my tax bills every year. I'm paying taxes on my trucks, cars. My God, they're insured to death. And it's just, it's just, that tax base spreads. It evolves and it grows. And it's just, I don't want tax rates.
And I'll tell you how the original service fee number came about. When we switched from the fire fee, Graham County and Macon County were the only two counties in North Carolina that had the fire fee that had the cap, that capped a certain dollar figure, no matter what your value was, which made it eventually illegal. It was deemed illegal and we had to change it. What we did is we took the dollar figures that they collected that year off that, and I think the max was 77.50, I think $77.50. So Walmart would pay $77.50 and the two-bedroom house could pay $77.50. But whatever that dollar figure was, if they collected $76,000 that year, we converted it to a person. We took their value. We converted it. We did a number, just like Lori did. We generated a service fee rate and that's where that number came from. So, and it's just grown over the years from those figures. And I will tell them, we are struggling as far as EMS on equipment, as far as vehicles. We had one ordered August of last year. It is in production and we might get it by fall. I had money to spend. You all gave me money to spend last year and believe it or not, I couldn't spend it. I couldn't get anybody to talk to me, to tell me that even the vendor that we normally deal with that has multiple contracts that we can access, they really couldn't tell me and didn't really want to talk to me about building another one, to put another one in line. So I understand the issues with getting equipment. I will tell you that eventually, after those discussions, somebody's going to have to make some hard decisions. And unfortunately, it will fall on this board or other folks.
Just saying that, I mean, I've heard Commissioner Bill many times talking about that's the best organization in Macon County. It was until we started pumping all this money into it and the money was divided it. And when you have firemen that are volunteers saying, oh, I'm not going because we have paid firefighters there, they can handle it. It's a little disheartening because it was, all my years, we worked so well together. Fundraisers, firefighters, rescues, whatever the case may be, we worked really, really well together. To see that friction is sad.
Any other questions?
I got one more question. You were talking about the three districts. You mentioned Highlands and Scaly Mountain. How does that affect Scaly Mountain with them being partnered in with Raven County, Georgia?
Well, let me rephrase when I say three districts. I don't necessarily mean three.
Three rates.
Three rates because you could take an area, let's say you do seven cents for the Franklin proper area and just off the top of my head, you get $4 million. You still contract the fire districts to those individual departments, just like we do now. But you would hand that money over to them in a different fashion. You would, instead of them collecting, having to set 11 cents for their area and 8 cents for theirs, you would divide it out equally and they would get a share of it. So it's not necessarily three districts, but three service fee areas. Scaly Mountain. Scaly Mountain is an anomaly in a lot of ways because they are a Georgia department and a North Carolina department. They have to maintain North Carolina standards for the stuff that's in the Scaly Mountain community. They have to maintain standards for the Georgia side on everything that's down on the Raven County side. They do get some funding through Raven County. Sometimes they'll buy equipment. I'm not exactly sure how that works. And then occasionally, and I don't, I don't get all the dollar figures, Sky Valley will contribute sometimes to them. In the eyes of North Carolina, they are, they are a North Carolina department. And then in Georgia, they're a Georgia department, even though it's the same people that serve both and they have the same name. And then in North Carolina, they're inspected by OSFM for their rating on the North Carolina side. Georgia doesn't recognize North Carolina's rating system. So the ISO Insurance Services Organization actually comes in and rates them for Sky Valley. So they go through multiple inspections for that. So that's an anomaly.
We're doing this out of law, but I do want to say I like you and I like how, you know, I draw an analogy in my mind to water. If you live in Franklin and you buy water, you don't have a choice. You have to have water. You don't have a choice on the tax rates. For your neighbor to pay for cheaper water and this neighbor to pay for more water, you know, it's a good point. I like where you, I think there's merit in that conversation.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I see some school people.
We wore that out last week.
I'm not sure what your expected piece there.
Gentlemen, ladies, thank you so much for this opportunity. I just, I've worked this week in light of this, the last Tuesday joint work session to try to meet with as many of you as I could. My name is Maggie Jennings. I am not here to represent the school board or the school system, but rather an organization called Arts for MCS, Macon County Schools, that was started in 2019 with, by an impassioned group of parents and community members based on the services that we were or we're not getting involving the arts. And in this, and we, pre-pandemic, took our concerns to Dr. Baldwin and to our school administrators at the time. And we got an absolute, you know what? Yes, you're exactly right. We do need these services. And our offer to them was, let us help you. We were the ex, myself having a background in teaching music. Our other fearless leaders at the time had a background in teaching art. First and foremost, we're parents. So we had, and of course, at the same time, we had a bunch of parents coming to us so saying, hey, why aren't our kids receiving this? Can you shed any light on this? So we were kind of seen as the bridge between the school system and the community in a lot of sense. In that time period, we came up with a list of gaps in art education funding that our kids here in Macon County were receiving. We came up with, we did a cost analysis with the help of Dr. Baldwin and the school system. And we just generally said, okay, in order for us to bridge these gaps and bring our, we were missing programs at the middle school. Art, did not have art for about 11 years there. We are still without a chorus program there. We had, I could go on. We came to the commissioners in the budget season for, well, it was the spring of 2020, just shy of the pandemic. And we said, hey, here's seven and a half positions that we've worked with the school system to, we're asking for. Obviously, we are not the school system. We know that they report to you and your discussions with them have to be obviously separate. However, we had 100-ish people in the commissioner meeting on Tuesday night, March 10th of 2020. That following morning, we met with our superintendent on, we were in the office for a different matter. And he said, ladies, that was amazing. I have had some discussions. I think you will receive, we will receive several of those positions out of the seven and a half. He said, you won't receive all of them because that's not how this works, but I think we can do this. And then two days later, the county shut down for the pandemic. That left, obviously, a lot of people going, okay, this is not obviously the most important thing going on in our county now. So we, as a grassroots organization, we backed off and we said, okay, however we can help, just let us know. Obviously, the pandemic money ESSER came about a little bit a few months after that. And the school system said, you know what? We're not going to be able to obviously ask for these positions, but we know that this is still a really huge need. So they said, let's use these funds for these positions. There are three of these positions that are ESSER funded. They are the two twin positions that are art at Isle Valley Elementary School and music at South Macon. I call them twin positions because for scheduling purposes, they have to, they balance each other out. And then there is the art program at Macon Middle School that is, all three of these positions are extremely important. We could go on and on and on and tell you all of the reasons that arts ed and collaborative, you know, collaborative arts programs affect our kids and the value that they bring to the table and the preventative reasons that they mean a lot to the, to our community. Obviously, with mental health, substance abuse, these are great ways that we kind of head them off at the pass and we provide something productive for them to do in a creative way that engages their mind differently than other things. However, that kind of, and we knew, we did, we did, we knew this coming in that after three years, we were going to have to re-advocate for these positions. And we said, but you know what? We're going to have data at that point of not just the research. Here's what the research is. Well, yeah, but here's what Macon County has shown and we do have that. And so today, Arts for MCS stands stronger than ever before. That not only are we, you know, we have so many parents now that are coming to us and they're in tears because they're going, parents now that are coming to us and they're in tears because they're going, this was the only thing that got my kid through third grade. My kid is failing and having all these mental, you know, health issues, and this was the only thing. And we're hearing that from all over the place. So the other, the other thing that we feel is necessary to point out is the geographically isolated issue with us being Macon County having two of the only, the only three publicly funded K-12s in our state. And so that does put us in awkward position that as, obviously, that requires more, not just capital, but it does require state allocations that other counties don't necessarily need. And without going into the binders and papers and tons of different places that these allocations come from within the state and they say, you've got to use this on this specific program. You can only use this in this. It does. It becomes an extremely huge deck of cards just from my research and myself asking questions. So on behalf of Arts for MCS, tonight, we're just asking you for three. We're asking you for three positions. I know the school system had a really huge ask on their recurring budget. I am not here to speak on that. I'm here to ask you for three. And those are the three that I mentioned, the music at South Macon, the art at Iola Valley, and the art program at Macon Middle School. Those are already staffed positions. They are already positions that we have been gearing momentum on, and this was the very first year we were able to have an all-county, all-county chorus that all of our schools participated in. They all sent students in there. Mr. Sherrill got to come to that. It was an amazing, we filled First Baptist Church with parents and community members. Standing ovation. The momentum of these students coming out of this experience is indescribable. So there are, at this point, I would venture to say well over 1,000, possibly thousands of individuals saying, please find these positions. I'm sure, I don't know if this is being livestreamed tonight, but I'm sure that there's been plenty of these people looking for that livestream tonight. And of course, interesting, you know, that we had a lot of different people that normally come to these things last Tuesday, and I know they're going to be following for this coming Tuesday. So I also want to point out, last thing, that at the, I noticed this, and I asked questions, at the end of the joint session last Tuesday night, there was a letter that was mentioned to you, and I don't, I know there were people that were, it was nine o'clock and everybody was kind of done, but there was a letter that was mentioned that the school board had written to the legislature, and it was hoped that perhaps maybe more communication could happen, I think, with you guys to get a consensus of the fact that we are in a geographically isolated need. There was a 3% that Mr. Rowland recommended in his budget that was going to cover the positions that were locally funded to match the state funding. I believe that comes out to something like 331,000 was the recommended increase there, round about. So that letter, I urge you to ask questions about that letter. And essentially, there is a House, and in the House and the North Carolina Senate, there is, Mr. Corman and Mr. Gillespie are attempting to get that 3% passed in short session this week. And so, and I say this week, I guess by the end of short session, which I believe, if I'm not mistaken, is next week. But my request on behalf of Arts for MCS would be that you would consider making a provision in the budget to say that if the House and Senate passes these and we, our county is provided that 331,000, could we use that fund, those funds for, it would probably be up to four positions. Fund what you can. And obviously, I don't think as a board, you have the ability to say, these are the positions that would be funded. But I believe we're kind of, I think we're all on the same page that those are, you know, those are positions that I think most people agree. I know, I trust the school board that they would use them for that with the understanding of your conversation. So, and obviously, if you find other ways to fund that, either way, we just, we don't care how we find it. We just, we urge you to consider that.
Ms. Jennings, could you give us those three art, what were those?
The three positions. They are the art program at Iola Valley Elementary, the music program at South Macon Elementary, and the art program at Macon Middle School.
Maggie, I want to apologize to you because I'm in the heart of our busy season at work, and I did get the email, but I did not get a chance to respond to you before, you know, tonight. So I would like to get together with you for sure because I need to know, I would like to know more about this.
I would love to share that with you.
Definitely, but I apologize.
I appreciate you. I appreciate you, all that you do for our county. And please know that I'm not here advocating for my job. This was, I am the music teacher at South Macon, but I have also accepted a position that is a backup position. So I am personally taken care of, but we do have two of those positions that those people would lose their job.
Could you ask the lady right there? She'd asked me to say something, and I think she may be with you.
I'm the art teacher for Iola Valley. And yeah, I'm curious as to what's going to happen with my job. I have been teaching art for 28 years. I started out in Caldwell County Schools, and then we moved back home and to where my husband was from, and I was in Duplin County Schools. And then three years ago, I took the position up here in Macon County because we had bought a home that was originally a vacation home up here. And I'm going to tell you honestly, in my 28 years, Iola Valley has been the absolute best school I have ever worked at.
Thank you.
Ever. I've had kids two days a week for art. You saw some of my kids at the Carousel of Arts on April 9. They were the boys and girls that talked about buildings that they made. Okay? That's just one of the many things that we've done. I'm just, I know there's a lot that has to be taken care of. I know money is money and all that, and budgets have to work. I get that completely. I just want you to know, you have something great going on. I would really hate for those kids to lose back. I have gotten to know all 400 kids, actually, it's like 436, I know them all. I used to be in schools where you saw them once a week for 30 minutes. That was it. You know how long it takes to learn names like that? Takes a while. And then to learn their personalities and stuff, you know, it takes a while. But having this was great for me, but it was even better for them because as Maggie said, we have numerous parents and kids that, oh, my favorite subject is art. You know, I can't wait, you know, to come. I'll have teachers tell me, you know, this kid's absent three days a week, but she comes the two days that she's got art. It's true. I mean, it's what gets a lot of kids through, and it affects everything. Music and art affects everything. And the state realized that in 2021 when they made it a high school graduate requirement, that they had to have art and, or the arts, I should say, and then that they, each school, you know, that they needed to give the equal opportunity to have it. And so that's kind of like, I know about that time, in 2021, that was right after they had started, you know, petitioning for the other things and then ESSER funds came in and, you know, all those wonderful things. And I just hope that we'll move forward and not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And may I clarify what the purpose of those full-time positions are? Obviously, art at the middle school is self-explanatory. You either have that program or you don't. The two, the art and music twin positions at the elementary schools allow there to be a full-time person at our two largest elementary schools in our Franklin area. If there are not, then those, the people that are left have to share those positions, putting them in the situation where they have to provide 30 minutes a week to over 1,000, well, not over 1,000, almost 1,000 students on a weekly basis, whether it be art or music. What that does, though, is it pretty much terminates any kind of after-school programming or any kind of meaningful, relevant connections that they can bring in. No, there's not going to be any performances for the most part. There's not going to be any after-school clubs, art club, chorus, no music theater club. So that terminates pretty much all of those after-school programs that really make that difference and give those kids those outlets. So.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jennings. Both of you.
Thank you.
And also, one thing I thought about is there was quite a number of years, 11? I'm not exactly sure, that the middle school didn't have art, visual art?
It was 11 at the time that we started advocating in 2019.
Ah. So if that program goes, that would be a disaster. And in my opinion, that would be a disaster because if you know middle school students, they're trying to find themselves, and that is one really great way to, really great way.
It was a big plug to a huge gaping hole.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything? I'm just pointing that away.
I'm just here if you guys have questions.
Come on up, just in case we have one.
Break up.
See him?
Yeah, let's break.
I don't think you want is an increase on tipping, right?
Not tipping, availability.
Oh, availability.
We're going to take a break.
We do this on you every time. We got to have a break.
Yeah.
We going on a break?
Every time he wants to, we go to a break.
All right.
I took like 45 seconds last time, just.
He said that was the only payday he got, so I didn't want to take it all this.
Hey, you want it?
Yeah. I was just running. I don't believe me.
Gentlemen, in all honesty, I have nothing prepared. You've now had time to look me over. I assume there might be some questions because of, uh, there is a fee increase requested in my budget, so I'm here to answer questions.
As I read your fee increase request...
Yes, sir.
And I think back at Commissioner Higdon's request to give raises to the convenience center employees, that raise is what's causing what's... I mean, we need...
Well, it's a portion of it. A portion, and it's...
I get it.
I mean, a guy making seven dollars and a half an hour needs a raise.
Well, absolutely. But when you raise minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour, the same thing happens. Everything else goes up. Well, you give them a raise, which they deserve a raise. I get it. But now we're talking about raising fees or other... Yeah, it goes hand in hand with more money causes more, costs more money.
What you call is creep.
So anyway.
Are you calling me a creep?
A creep, the government creep.
Oh, government creep.
Yes.
Chris, is it possible to get a list of past and present and future equipment for your operation? I would like a list of all your equipment. You know, we talked about twenty thousand hours and all this. But I would like to have a list of all the equipment that the enterprise fund has purchased.
Now, a historic list or just what's on property now?
No, a historic list of what has been purchased, what has happened with that equipment, and how many hours was on that equipment or whatever, uh, at the time of disposal of that equipment. Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be able to absolutely guarantee I didn't miss something, but, uh, in all honesty, most, most everything we've ever bought is still out there somewhere. Probably a couple of Lee Bears, which, we used to have three Lee Bears and two of them are, are ever-depleting carcasses trying to keep the third one going. And, uh, that's, anyway, I, yeah, I'll get, and I, I apologize for not, I did put that, I put that in my budget last year and I just didn't get it updated this year, but it'd be simple enough for me to update that and get that to you by the time you meet Thursday, perhaps.
Yeah.
Paul was asking for it.
Recession till Thursday, I have another budget, it's worth it.
The way these convenience centers were set up was a rush job when it happened.
Yes, sir.
And it's never been corrected. Maintained the same concept, less than twenty hours or less employees to escape benefits. Some of the guys have been there, well, a couple of them have been there a long time.
Mm-hmm. We've got probably three or four that are fifteen years plus.
Yeah.
Um, oh, I don't have that with me. I will say, you know, we started this, um, we started the seven fifty, which probably in eighteen or nineteen was our starting pay. Uh, it's now eleven...
Eleven point nine three five one?
Eleven ninety-three, um, proposing to go to twelve fifty-three. Um, but I looked at, I looked at our retention rate, and I mean, we employ a lot of elderly, so some of the retention rate, just, you know, leaving the workforce or leaving period. Uh, but our retention rate has been seventy-three percent since we started bringing this up. So I think it, I think it has been a benefit in retaining employees, um, the, the work that you have led and the previous boards have, uh, have allowed me to, to do for these folks, so.
I think it's only fair, I support. You told me one time it'd be twelve dollars a year for fifty years. I mean, twelve dollars a month. No, what, we'll pay a hundred and twelve dollars?
Pay a hundred and eight now. Pay nine dollars a month.
Yeah, nine dollars.
This will go to ten dollars a month.
You told me, I asked you two questions. You said the other one, keep it at that. It's going to last for fifty years. Now you've changed on both of those.
No, 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 no. You're mixing two different stories. The landfill will last for fifty years, although we are eight years into that, so...
These guys need to be recognized for their value and, like, I can't hire anybody at twelve dollars an hour.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the job they do. Uh, I've said in front of many, every board that's ever sat here, um, there is no other group of county employees that interact with every citizen on a weekly basis, um, so...
I'll, I'll support the increase. I almost support tax increase, but...
Well, luckily I have fees, I don't have taxes.
But I'll support, uh, I know where these, I know exactly where this money's going.
Right.
And I don't mind kicking in there a dollar a month.
They're great, um, they're great people out there. You can go buy, they're just always seem happy-go-lucky and have a nice conversation with you and, uh...
I mean, that's, historically, that's been one of the things, you know, they, they are, they are generally older. Actually, you know, not to, I don't want to get into any kind of situation here, but when, if, when we have hired younger ones, they didn't last for, I mean, they were terrible. Uh, but a lot of these folks, it is, it's just about, this is their reason to get out of the house and see people, and they absolutely love it.
Your signs look better. Yep. Oh, yeah, your signs, thank you.
You got it.
Yes, sir. That's so much better.
They got the signs. Everybody likes to make signs. All right. Through? Through them, we're going to throw along. Oprah's coming on.
I'm, I'm, I'm here for whatever you need.
I'm dragging on to the convenience center workers that, I go in there and I get an elderly person to pull in there and they'll go right over to that car or truck or whatever, get that garbage out for them, and, uh, that service would have smiled.
We've, we've, we've got some good ones.
Yeah.
If you're going to take care of them this year in your budget, I appreciate that. If we could ask that question and we, on top, we don't know.
Right, right.
And I'd just say...
Well, as I told y'all last week, two weeks, two weeks ago, I mean, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't put bows and flowers. It, this is just exactly what it is. And I've never been so upset, I was telling somebody, I've never been so upset to ask for a fee increase. There's no shiny objects in it. It's just to square up. I mean, there, there's absolutely, there's nothing here, uh, except, um, you know, making the, making the enterprise fund hole from year to year, so...
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate what you do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowan, anything here we need to keep working with?
Well, um, this, this budget, Chris had a twelve-dollar fee increase. His budget's fifty thousand less than last year, so I, if we talked to him for five minutes, this, this would take less than that, shouldn't it? No, I'm just kidding.
On my way out, I will say, my operating is actually less than what it was last year.
Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Shields, that, that this board has, um, on whatever, whatever topic you'd like to discuss in here.
Mr. Sheriff, we'll start off...
If I get my three in first, can I go home?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can I go out home?
Because you may overlap mine.
We have to vote on something.
No, we can't vote on anything.
I know, but...
Consensus.
We will need some consensus tonight.
We need what?
We will need some consensus on some things if we could.
I'm going to be quick. Three things. Looking through this, I don't underst, I mean, this, man, this is amazing. I guess the new normal is a sixty-five thousand dollar budget, uh, sixty-five million dollar annual budget. But anyway, there's some things in here I could get nitpicky and I'm not. Every year we talk about the Calwe School. Uh, that thing was set up ten, twelve years ago to be self-sustaining within three years, and it's never happened. Uh, and this year is twenty thousand dollar fee. Do we see any financial records from them before we allocate funds? I mean, you know, we've requests from the fire departments, uh, their fund balances or whatever they have, their bank reserves. Do we do that at Calwe School or do we just...
We do not, but I will say this. The electricity line item, that's eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. We actually, the county is billed for their electricity and we pay it directly. And then that also covers, I think, I can't remember if they've got natural gas out there or propane, but those bills come directly to Macon County and we pay those directly, you know, so we know what we're paying for. And then anytime they do renovations, I make them get their renovations done first. Then they have to provide me an invoice and a copy of the check, and then I reimburse them. But no, I don't see their actual financials, but we do have those controls in place that, again, we're paying their electric and gas bills directly and any renovations they have to pay for and request reimbursement and provide receipts and checks, check copies.
And we are on a lease arrangement with them, so they, they lease it from them and then they sublease the space to tenants.
Is it self-sustaining? That's, it's like a lot of government programs.
Yeah, operationally, operationally, all we're, all we're doing right now, you know, at one time we paid a consultant...
Yes.
Contract fee down there for the longest time.
Right.
About thirty-six thousand dollars a year. That went off about two or three years ago, and, and now all we do, again, it is a county-owned building that we lease, uh, to the, uh, cultural arts and, uh, the arts and heritage folks. And we, the only operational expenses we pay is the electricity and natural gas for that. And then like capital improvements, I think some of the capital improvements that they've been making last year and this year are ADA-related, um, accessibility. And there again, going back to with it being a county-owned building, with it being on our, um, role, we, we try to keep it ADA-accessible and keep those, uh, improvements made down there.
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, I'm not going to be on this board, this might be my last budget, thankfully, and, but we're going to give it the flavor of the board just to keep funding.
You know, I actually spoke to...
Pardon?
I actually had a small conversation. I don't want to throw them under the bus, but, is it on? I actually had a small, a small conversation the other day about this school with some of the Calwe community. And I kind of pitched to them, if we were to grant them ownership of the school and then pay a, a one or two-time allocation, it puts them in a position where they have ownership of the building and they can apply for grants and other income sources that would essentially, you know, deem them independent. And I, I never followed back up, but they seemed enthusiastic.
Well, it was set up, it was three-year funding, sixty thousand dollars a year.
I think what's, what I've heard, and I'm happy to dive into this, is they don't own the building, so they can't pursue other funds and grants because it's a county-owned building. So if they were in a nonprofit or they were in a different position, I think they could become self-sufficient. And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with giving the same allocation with title of the property. I mean, the community bought the building anyways or paid for it, built it. You know, if that's, that's the best use for the building right now, which I think it probably is, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Secondly is, uh, community funding pool. I never could, is there a line item for that or is that split?
Uh, it's in your special appropriations. That will be, uh, towards the back of your, go to general fund expenditures.
Very last page of general fund expenditures.
They're on page, uh...
Forty-two, very last page.
Forty-two, and right there, under, uh, you'll see RES, or excuse me, you'll see the, uh...
Yeah, you're on the right line item, RES special.
RES special.
S-P-E-C.
And that right there is the community funding pool.
So it's up from seventy-five to eighty thousand?
Seventy-five thousand of that's community funding pool. The other five thousand is for the ladies, the Franklin Garden Club. In the past, that's been put in maintenance's budget, but that's not really fair to maintenance because we really have never given maintenance additional funds. And if you remember, those ladies came before y'all and they asked, we'd historically been allowing them twenty-five hundred dollars of expenditures, and again, that had been coming out of maintenance's budget, but we never actually put extra money in maintenance's budget. So this, I put it here this year, that five thousand for them, because, you know, they requested the increase to five thousand and you, all of you guys seem to be in favor of that for the work that they do and the beauty that they provide downtown. So that's, that's why it's five thousand dollars more.
Well, my vote would be to, to do away with the community funding, the seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's just, I just, I can't, I can't see, if, if a charity can't make it without government's assistance, then, so my vote would be, is there any flavor? I mean, I don't know how to do this. My motion would be, or, I mean, I would, I'm not supportive of the community funding pool.
I think one of the reasons I haven't served on this place that I do now, and been a commissioner for what, so many years, I think what we were trying to do is cut down the abundance of requests that was coming to us, that we put it into somebody else's betting court, somebody else's arena. So they've had, because we had people, whether it was for softball, it was, you, you had all these organizations out here that were coming to you requesting funds, and I think we kind of shipped that to Patrick and that group there to monitor that, to keep from everybody coming here, doing their request. Don't you remember that?
Oh, yeah. That's, I mean, it was, the commissioners didn't want to take, I mean, I never minded people coming in and requesting things. You weigh it out, you had input into it, but I know the town did away with theirs. I think Highlands did away with theirs. Here we are, we're still...
And, and I agree with you. I don't think it's right for us to collect tax money from the citizens of Macon County and then decide who we're going to give their money to.
Yeah, I just, I can't...
It's, I mean, if I have an organization that I wholeheartedly support, I'm going to give them much more money than the county government's going to give them. So I, I agree. I think it ought to be left up to the citizens of Macon County to decide what, um, nonprofit organizations in this county that they're going to, um, support. And, and you're right. I know Town Highlands, um, they did away with their funding pool and, and I believe the Town Franklin did as well.
Yeah. I mean, that's just, that's small potatoes on a sixty-five million dollar bill.
Oh, yeah.
Two hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars, but...
Do, uh, is, is it public knowledge who receives the funding?
Oh, yeah. The board approves every year. They come, they'll, they'll...
They'll be here next Tuesday to present to y'all.
So they're going, they're going to present who gets the money?
Right. And they do that every year. We have a board that's established, um, that, that will make the recommendations to the board, uh, on, for these organizations that have applied to them. This board has vetted them. And then you will see the, uh, the ones they're recommending as well as the amount they requested, and then the amount that the community funding pool board will be recommending to y'all.
And last year they had to advertise for applicants, didn't they? I mean, they were not lined up, seeking the assistance, but I mean, that's just, these are things we start, things and never evaluate them and never, certainly never eliminate any of them.
The question, Mr. Manager, about that now, the funds that they come in next week to seek is in the twenty-four budget.
Correct.
So we have an option when we adopt the twenty-five budget to either fund it or not fund it. And, and that would be at the end of next budget cycle.
Yeah.
So we have to do it.
It's like Laurie said, we still, throughout the year, we do charitable funding. It's like here at the Garden Club, that's five thousand dollars. And, and they deserve that. They deserve really more. Nana Hala, the, the, Skater Mountain.
Scaly Mountains got ten in the budget.
I mean, those are, those are the decisions towards char, the five oh one C threes that this board made. I mean, those are, those are the decisions towards char, the 501(c)(3)'s that this board made. Boy. So is it, we're doing it both ways, you know? So I, I think it's, if I'm, when I was on this board, I always appreciated opportunity to look in my, my eye and listening and the justification and I didn't support them all, but anyway, that's a thought. There's not, if there's not a consensus on doing away with that, I'm, I'm good with that bringing up. And then the other thing that I didn't really understand is under the senior services, thing is there's senior services assessment for $200,000? What is, what, I've talked to nobody about that.
Uh, that was included, uh, senior services has, that, that was identified on our, um, on our space needs analysis and Commissioner Antoine brought that up. And the $200,000 amount, we paid for a space needs analysis in 2018, about 160,000. And when you look at the building, um, you know, and look at the recommendations from the space needs analysis along with, um, it did identify as a priority on that to look at renovations to the, um, senior services building. And, you know, we have heard, um, seniors had mentioned and had came in here and mentioned that to us as well as Commissioner Antoine, so we felt like that amount would give us, uh, the amount needed to get in there and do a good thorough assessment of really what was needed kind of, you know, before we, uh, if the board wanted to head in that direction to, uh, to look at either the renovation or, uh, a new senior center or something of that sort. So that's why that has been included in there.
It just, that number seems excessive because we did the whole space needs analysis for the whole county wide. It was what, 160,000?
I think so.
160,000, 200,000 for one building? It just seemed excessive to me, but whatever, I mean.
The space needs analysis that was donated, can we not use that?
We can, I mean, it, but it just is very, a very general hiatus, you know? Yes, this building could use some, uh, renovations to maximize the space. It wasn't identified as that high of a priority, uh, in the 2018, uh, space needs analysis, but nonetheless, it was identified and, and basically they just highlighted some things and said, you know, if you wanted to, um, study making some renovations or, or some possible improvements to this, then you could go further and that's what this was, uh, that's what this is attempting to do is just to go that next step, um, that was recommended there and.
So I did a couple walkthroughs with, um, that is an absolute awesome, um, organization and what they do for the seniors of this county. It's, um, and so walking through there a couple times, um, my take out of this is, um, their biggest problem that they have is parking. They need additional parking and, um.
Parking and also the stairs, like the way that's set up there, like for them to keep going up and down the stairs. You know what I mean? It is, it's not feasible for what they do in there. I mean, they, they're trying to make it work.
Yeah.
You know, but there's a susceptible for somebody to really hurt themselves there.
And, um, like I said, they, I mean, it, it just, um, heartwarming for seeing the seniors over there with their activities and, and the things that they do working for the seniors.
Shields over there?
Well, he went over there and hung a flag or something, I don't know what he did over there.
You and I did, yeah.
But, um, so, yeah.
Shields might end up there.
Maybe consistent or something.
Um, what is it?
Go back there.
What do you need to consider when through?
Well, let me, let me just alert you to something, I think, Dave, is that this conversation, senior citizens, is just starting. I, I don't know where they are tonight and they may be here coming next time. But there's, some of us had visitations at the, uh, the bank on the hill, um, what's the name of it?
Uh, the old Macon Bank property.
Old Macon Bank property, um, for senior citizens. So there's a, there's people out there has a vision about what to do with the, the bank up there. Some of us has had walked through with them and, uh, me being one of them. And so I just wanna say, when you start talking about, I think I was hearing you say renovating, doing something over there?
Mm.
Or adding, doing some cleanup or something that you was. You, there's another conversation out there you need to hear regarding to the senior citizens and what they need that relates to the bank up there. And one thing is, you mentioned it, you brought it up, is the safety, trying to get in and out of the senior citizens. I went out there the other day, I had to park in the church parking lot. Was nicely asked to leave and find another place, but there's no other place to park. And, uh, but this conversation is still gonna be out there. I don't know when it's gonna be, I saw the two ladies here. Oh, they were at the meeting a week ago in, in the Fine Arts Center and, um, I'm just saying, you're dealing with a conversation here that's gonna have more to this.
When we looked at that, look, going to do that walkthrough over there, um, I don't think the vision was for that to be strictly for the senior center. No, you're exactly right. Talking about like, maybe it'll consolidate several different departments for the use of that building. And at the same time, like, if that were to happen, like, say that building were to be purchased, you know, first of all, selling the existing building and applying funds towards, you see what I'm saying? Getting that building, but also consolidating some departments where you can put more in that, in that large building. Because it's, it's a really large building.
Oh, it's a beautiful building.
I can see how they can help for them, but it's definitely not a building that's suited just for senior services. It can benefit like the county in a way, better way than, you know what I mean? So we can add, there's a lot of different departments I think that can fit within, just it'd be a matter of just sitting down and figure out like, what can you put in there?
Yeah, and what he's saying is, is, is correct there. If you look at, let's just say you took that bank and you put several organizations or other departments in there, then you're freeing up the cost of stuff and that you're, you've gotten into other buildings by repurposing that building to occupy, I think I heard seven there at one time. Then you wouldn't have the experience on the, on certain buildings. I've, I've got a thing, I hadn't got to talk with Mr. Rowan about it.
I'd encourage you guys to dust off the capital improvement plan that we had done, senior services ranked last.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you know, if we, we paid for space needs, capital improvement plan, if we just completely ignore that and start jumbling around the importance, the rankings, it was, it was a moot point, it was a waste of money to even do it. The capital improvement plan, the justice center, the sheriff's jail, those were high rankings on the capital improvement plan.
And I think they will agree with the 100%, but also they're saying now, we can look at this building, had opportunity to walk through, you could put other departments in there that would free up or you wouldn't have a cost of those buildings. Let's just say you put social security up there or somewhere like that or.
Social security.
Well, but if something is costing us money, the county's money, uh, for its facilities.
DSS?
Yeah. We talked about DSS was one of the departments we talked about.
Yeah. Well, I'm just telling you, it's out there, it's got, it's got some breadth to it and, uh, you, you're probably approached about having a conversation with them.
The question is, with this 200,000 in that study, when would Macon County be financially ready to move forward with what this study, um, 2034?
We weren't able to.
Well, that's just the thing, I mean, that, that's just the thing is the, um, you know, I think the study gives you the opportunity, if this is something the board wants to do, uh, to really, to closely evaluate that and maybe some other, uh, things such as this board has mentioned, um, tonight, to look into some of those things and, and to give us at least a picture of, of, I, and there again, I don't know if this type of study, um, is even gonna get down into numbers that, that are going to, I, I don't know how, how in-depth it will be in terms of the numbers of some of these other things, but you, you have a chance to target this fund. And there again, it might be, we might get a proposal back for about $50,000 to do it. We just wanted to be sure that we included enough money to do the assessment of the senior center and see what that needed. Like you said, you know, if the steps are the problem and, and the study comes back, hey, you fix these steps and, and fix ingress and egress, now you've taken a $10 million conversation and you've made it a, a $500,000 conversation. So at the end of the day, that $200,000 was worth it. If, if, you know, but, but other, in the, in the absence of that, at least it will tell you what you're dealing with, uh, moving forward or what kind of price or costs that you're actually looking at and what kind of deficiencies that, that you're actually looking at having to fix in that building instead of just a, the 150,000 foot view that was provided by the space needs analysis.
There they are building you.
And that's what they'll tell you at the bank, if you go up on the hill and look at that, um, their view is be a part of that bank up there and also there's other groups that be part of it.
And John, you bring up a good point, um, you bring up a good point about the, that 20, when we would be able to do it, 2034. I think that is a good point because I think, you know, with this, I think that 200,000 is meant to speak somewhat toward the, um, the level of detail and the level of planning that we need to be going into when we're talking about taking on other, or potentially taking on other significant capital expenditures outside of those that we already, our feet are taped to the bike on, if you will. And which is a lot, uh, you know, that we discussed last week, that 150 million dollars. So I think moving forward, like every, every major capital project, every, every time that we talk about these things, we have to keep that in mind, that, that the future, under the current revenue parameters at our current tax rate, as far as significant capital expenditures go, the future is going to be very oriented towards planning and, and very oriented towards, you know, starting to build back reserves again. We're, we're, we're gonna be in a build back period there for a while. And so, um, as much of this planning as we can do that, that really identifies where the needs are and where they're not, you know, the, I think the better off we're gonna be, especially like you mentioned, with these significant, significant capital projects that we're, we're in deep on right now.
I don't wanna pick, and I'm just stating a fact right here, but if it's 2024 and you're talking 2034, where we can fund this, it's gonna be 10 years old, space needs analysis is. Before we could actually do something with it, well then, is it relevant at that time?
Right, and there again, I.
My point, you know what I mean? Like, if we're gonna spend $200,000 on a piece of documentation, we're gonna use 10 years from now, it's 10 years old.
Right, and, and again, that, again, that number is, it, it might not be 200, it might, but they could, if you could get somebody to, to come in there and say, hey, um, here's your deficiencies, you've got some, some handicap issues here, you can fix it with a lift, you know, you can make, here's some things you could potentially do in the parking lot to improve that.
And that wasn't already done?
No, the, the space needs analysis was a very high-level study that dealt with each individual county building.
Our schools.
Man, just going, just thinking outside the box, just thinking, I'm like Jeff Weller or somebody. I mean, if we contracted with somebody like him, for the, God, it's not too, $200,000.
Right, and there again, yes.
And he's qualified to do something like that, isn't he?
Sure, and there again.
That's what they're really asking for here.
Right, just going, there again, going back to, um, just having to have a number to put there, um, to be able to move forward and understanding the, the last comparable we had was that space needs analysis in 2018.
I think at this time, what Chairman Shields was talking about is there's some outside conversations going on about this. I think we need to let some of that stuff play out because, I mean, there's no need having a study done on something that could potentially be something that's obsolete for the senior services.
The trouble with the study, you, you hire a group, just like my criticism of this, what's going on in the school system now, you hire architecture firms to bring them in here, you turn them loose and then that's just giving them blank check you have. Outside, outside classrooms, you have ADA parking on a tractor we never even requested parking for. I mean, it's expansive, the purpose of government is to expand and, uh, provide a service, but in the process to expand and provide more services. Everybody wants a new building, everybody wants the best. And those are not always necessarily, those are not necessary to provide, provide the services that are required. So guys, just be careful with how all this new, new this, new that, new that, it's, it's, we're taking on a big debt with this school thing and, uh, y'all are gonna be faced with some very serious challenge, capital challenges.
Every time we turn around, there's somebody just like with Dr. Thomas coming in with this needs here. I mean, and they're just continuously everywhere you look, there's one that's looming around the corners.
And every, every one is his most important issue. Mine's more important than Joe's. And you gotta weed through it.
We have to be extremely careful, um, uh.
Say no occasionally.
Um, so anyways, that's.
Is that it?
Oh, no. No better.
Let's get it on, boys.
I'm waiting on you.
I'm done, I'm done, go.
Two hours.
Y'all wanna talk to yourself, will you?
You did it like last year, let's give bust, bust to Highlands.
Um, transportation, I, I went through these and I'll just, um, salaries and benefits increased by $76,924, which is eight and a half percent increase. That was, um, grant-funded, is that correct?
Out of your transit, um, your transit total budget's gonna be one and a half million in fiscal year '25. And of that one and a half million dollar total budget, only about $304,000 is represented with county funding. So the rest of that budget, the 1.2 million is grant-funded.
Um, the only other thing, I am the liaison to, uh, the transit, uh, Macon County Transit. And, um, with the business community that's upset about the hiker business, in my mind, I think that in the best interest of the county, the taxpayers and the business community, that should go to a private sector. If we're gonna be in the hiker business, let, let the private, um, um, because we're getting businesses that are coming in here fighting each other because they're stating that this business is getting special treatment by transit and, um, and it, it just, um, and we were told that just like Chick-fil-A over there, well, there's no shelter, there's no drop-off point. There's not one out here on the corner of the courthouse where.
Can I, can I interject? So I had a conversation with Darlene about three weeks ago. I don't know if anybody else is aware, I wasn't. It was only a three-month period out of the year that they've done for a couple of years now. And she told me after the past couple of years, they are very likely that they would not, you know, comply again next year and, and in the future. So I feel like consensus of this board to say just that.
That's what I was told too.
It's handled, so I feel like that, that problem solved. It's three months, it's three months, it's three months out of the year, so it's not a 12-month problem. And then she said, there's just been so much.
Right.
Hassle. And, and then there's people with appointment times that get shuffled. And so they, she said, most likely this would not continue on in the future. So I think that's.
Because I think it needs, transit needs to be used to help our folks out here that don't have transportation that needs a way to the doctor or the grocery store, whatever. What, in my mind, that's what it's intended for, not, and, and just listening to these business people and, it, it just gonna, it's just gonna get more ugly. You're trying to cover up the reason why it's not, well, you look out here, there's no shelter out here and that's the drop-off point. So that's excellent, that's, I think.
I talked with a couple of them the other day at a meeting and they're under assumption that it's a dead thing for next year.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, if these businesses want to provide a, a service to go pick up hikers, then let them go pick up hikers. I mean, I, I appreciate the hikers being here, it, it, um.
Shop now or be economic.
Yep, um, so, okay, um, tax office. We have $176,161 upgrade in imagery. And my question to this is how does this help the taxpayers? I read, I read in there that it's going to help the tax office, the same way as that. I read, I read in there that it's going to help the tax office the same way as that state of the art programming that was purchased a few years back. It helps them with the with not having boots on the ground, but we still have the same boots in the office.
Right. And I think more that can be looked at also as cost avoidance because as you continue, you know, the development we've seen in Macon County has been tremendous. And when you start talking about from the period of February through June, when you're talking about our tax base grew by $200 million during that time, that tells you the rate that this development is occurring. And with that being said, this imagery, it's a continuation, it's every two years, we started with pictometry back in, I think, 2018. And this pictometry, what it does is every two years, they will do a new aerial flight at the county. And essentially, what this upgrade is, is I think it's about a $40,000 upgrade from what our flight would have been otherwise. And all it's doing is it's making the imagery, it's taking it down from a six inch imagery to a four, to a three inch imagery, which improves the level of detail that that can be used from these structures. They're flying and not like a, not like your imagery you see on 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 your GIS site. These are actually 3D orthogonal images that can go all the way around, that you can get accurate measurements from the tax office standpoint without these individuals having to to leave to check for an addition or to be out of the office, go check for an addition, new construction, come back, put it in. So it's more of a cost avoidance thing, and I think it speaks to the value of this, that we've been able, especially since in 2018, when we started with pictometry, all the the avoidance that we've been able to, the cost avoidance through additional personnel that we've been able to keep out of the office by having this technology. And as we continue improving on it, and as we continue to grow, we're just going to keep receiving more and more of a benefit off that. So I know this, it's a big chunk this year, but it will go down next year because we fly on an every two year basis. And also, we added last year to go along with it, it's called Change Finder. And Change Finder is an accompanying program that is added to the pictometry that picks up any new additions to structures since the previous flight. So if there's a structure's been added on that somebody hadn't pulled a building permit for, that's picked up and identified by that Change Finder. And there's thousands and thousands of dollars that we've picked up just off that alone, just off that Change Finder that we would have otherwise never even known about, had it not been for that technology and our ability to use it.
Well, I'll just tell you, Mr. Manager, as a diehard conservative person, the government does everything they possibly can to enter our properties, your properties and everybody else's property without entering that property. And and that's what this right here, this is just another way for the government to watch every move you make and get every nickel and every penny out of every citizen of this country. And this is not, I mean, I have a problem with all that just for the simple fact that I'm a conservative person, always have been, and I believe in less government or limited government. And and so these things, it's an, in my mind, it's an invasion of your property without entering your property. And that's, that's just my take on all these. I mean, that's no different than, and I know I'm getting off key here, but it's no different than the internet service. The internet service, that's why, in my mind, the government is pushing broadband in every household in America. It's just for the simple fact, you've got smart TVs, you've got computers, you've got cell phones, you've got Alexa, you've got all this. I got a satellite phone in my truck. I was riding down the road one day and all of a sudden this lady starts talking to me. I was, what the heck? This lady just comes right in on my satellite phone. And and so it's, it's an invasion of property owners and everything in my mind, but I appreciate your explanation to that.
Just remember, AI is a common, that's your.
What is it?
So.
Artificial intelligence, explain that.
Okay. So Commissioner Higdon talked about the Cowie School and the community funding pool.
Automation.
Health and Human Services. I know you have requested in the budget proposal, two new hires for 171,571. I would recommend not budgeting that 171,000. I read on further where your your recommendation is not to advertise those two positions until January 25. Well, I would recommend that we do not include that in the budget. And we gave them $20,000 the first time that I know of that they got rid of the backlog for $20,000. I think we should monitor that and make sure that we don't get behind. If we get behind again, then we can, we can talk about those positions at that time. Because if we can, if we can pump in $20,000 and get rid of this backlog that has been haunting Commissioner Higdon in how long, a month?
Those boys busted your duties.
They did, and they did a fantastic job.
And in the process, the most experienced employee in environmental health is dismissed. So it's, there's no way, this backlog is coming back, it's coming back.
Was dismissed.
Dismissed.
We can't talk about personnel.
Okay. So that's just, and, well, I can't talk about this next section then because it's personnel. The senior center assessment, we've talked about that. Recreation. How did, how did recreation eliminate two full time positions?
Through contracts, largely through contract labor with the, we've contracted out now multiple sites. We had a site supervisor retire in Nantahala that we didn't fill. And that is, we actually, once that position was vacant, it then became a maintenance position that was split with emergency management to do all the emergency management stuff that needed to be done over there, as well as all of our maintenance stuff at various sites over there, aside from just the rec park. So it worked out well there. And then I think we had a vacant maintenance worker position that was resolved, that was dissolved, that we did not fill.
Okay. So actually, there was one that was eliminated and one that was never hired.
Two eliminated from the recreation budget.
Okay.
Over the past two years.
Yeah. But one was actually a person that left.
It was.
And one we never filled.
Right, right. But the two positions are now not on the books.
Okay.
Right.
Position, take care of the new library.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So now that you you've mentioned that, how and who chose the subcontractor or subcontractors for mowing these facilities?
They were all advertised.
Okay.
Franklin Press.
Do you have the dates on the advertising?
We can get them.
Not with us, of course.
Okay.
I would like to have.
We're good, but we're not that good.
Ah, you're the. Because, and the contract, I mean, I, I, I'm in this business, so when I talk to, you know, we go to school together and everything else, and and maybe it was something that these companies missed in the paper or whatever. But who decided the scope of work to be subcontracted? And who decided, who decided how much the pay was going to be for these? And, and I will just tell you that the town of Highland subcontract every bit of their maintenance, as far as landscaping and mowing. And I have one of those contracts, I've had it for 30, well, 35, 36 years, minus three years. And I do that property for half of what it would cost the town of Highlands to hire staff to maintain that one property. So through that, if it's done correctly, in my mind, you could subcontract most of the mowing and maintenance in this whole county and save the taxpayers money.
Absolutely. I mean, sure, I mean, you could, we could contract all of, you know, you could contract a lot of the mowing or all of the mowing, but but right now, you know, you have, we have people that are committed to that, that's what those folks do. There there's certain, there's a balance there, and that's the direction we're working towards, as we have shown here in recs, a good example. You know, we looked at doing the same thing, you know, through attrition as employees retire like with things such as custodial. But the thing of it is, is you can't find a custodial service that that comes in anywhere west of Asheville. You know, we looked at that a couple of years ago, things like that. So we're always looking at things like that. And we've really found a way, and the rec budget here is a great example, through the contracting out some of our mowing, and that was sitting down with the rec department. We had had a board, a previous board a couple of years ago ask us to look into that. We went down that road, started, I think actually Commissioner Young was instrumental when we started looking into that and wanted just what you're saying, you know, it's a great way to reduce costs. So we started doing that and identified the areas that were, that we felt like could get the most bang for our buck with the contract labor with the recreation director. We developed that scope of work, we put it out to bid, it's a point with North Carolina general statutes, like we do everything, we advertised it in Franklin Press, and and we received multiple bids on on each time that we've released a portion of this. So as we head that direction, you know, and and we continue to look for every way to decrease costs, that that is, the the contract mowing has been, as you've pointed out, a very good bang for our buck, and we hope to continue going that route.
Yep. I mean, it's, and not only that, is if you have an employee, we've had this discussion before, if you have an employee, it works for the government, it's extremely hard to terminate that person. And if you have a company that is hired to maintain the old Parker Meadows Park out there, and this scope of work is right here and they fail to do so, you have a conversation with them. They either step up to the plate to do their job, or you terminate them and you go on about your business. And then, if you have an employee that mows the grass, grass only grows eight months, nine months out of the year, so what do you do with the employee the next three months? And if you have a subcontractor, you don't have to worry about that. You don't have to provide benefits and all that other stuff. So that's, I think that conversation should be in the future about looking at all these properties and just see what, see how, if we can improve the qual, and I'm not talking about anything that these guys are doing, all I'm saying is, is when you have a year round employee and you have to, they have to perform 12 months, and the grass is only growing nine months, then there's three months downtime, so. All right. So, I mean, y'all pipe in, I mean. I just got stuff. One thing that I will like to say though, and I was going to say it next week, but I'm going to say it, congratulations to all the seniors, class of 2024, and the CTE program, I went out to that ceremony the other day, Mr. Shiltz was up there on the stage, all decked out in his suit and hugging with with a few of them and all that stuff. But anyways, it was awesome to see those kids. I mean, one of them is already a pilot, two years.
Before he got his license.
Two years in a three year program. Paramedics or EMTs already got a job with the county. That is a great feeder program. And and that, and I'm just going to single out this one kid that got his, that went through aviation. That kid has a fantastic future ahead of him with lots of money.
And you had young people who got that CTE piece diploma before even graduating.
Yeah. Oh, yeah? And so, and there was a great field, I mean, firefighters and everything else out there that was, it was.
Remember that, you and I talked about this a little bit, that piece is part of the new high school that we want to bring in the focus, your CTE program, bringing the new high school, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Those are the knowledge we needed.
Manager, do you know anything about the term of Secure Act? Have you ever heard that term?
Not sure.
It's, and I'm not sure. Mr. Counsel, have you heard the term Secure Act in the federal government, the bill or a law that they're trying to pass that, and I'm just getting bits and pieces of that, I haven't really dove into this. It's supposed to be in protection of your part time employees that are entitled to some type of retirement benefits that is supposed to be enacted. Tammy, do you know anything about?
Not really.
Okay. That was just something that that I saw and I thought I better.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll look into that for sure.
But you mentioned that, that's also one of the conversations we have, Paul's had it too, when we go by our dumpsters and things like that, you'll run into some people who've been there a long time, and they want to be compensated as a part time person. And we've had this discussion, I know that Mr. Ridenhour's had this discussion, advised us on it, about people who want that, there's a, there's more to, well, I think there's a vault, a law now, so that secure thing, maybe trying to circumvent that, a new law.
Right. Okay. Well, I wasn't sure, I just thought I'd ask while I, okay. So Macon County schools will get how much increase in your proposed budget?
Uh, yes, sir. It will be an increase in operational funding of 335,405. And there's also, Commissioner Sherrill, we proposed an increase in capital, annual capital outlay of 100.
100, okay.
So total increase in funding, increase in local funding to the Macon County school system will increase by 435,405 in the coming fiscal year. And that is the second consecutive year, as you'll recall, in the prior fiscal year, we increased, that was the first increase we'd had to local education funding in the last five years. And this board increased the funding at that time by 880,638. So, and and that was again in operational funding. So over the past two years, this board has increased operational funding to the Macon County school system by about 1.2 million dollars.
And you know, we're looking at that quarter cent, quarter, quarter cent sales tax thing we're looking at this year, that can help on the operational piece. Key of the voters.
Did any of you guys attend the graduation ceremony for Franklin High School? Did any of you guys attend the graduation ceremony for Franklin High School?
They had to graduate.
Yeah. Well, I attended, I got my times mixed up, I thought it started at six, and started at seven, so I get there about 10 after six, because I'm just gonna slip in there, and so parking was a disaster. I mean, that whole campus was completely jammed with vehicles. Every parking lot surrounding Franklin High School campus was jammed park. Down the street, and the other parking lots, and business parking lots, it was all full. That's worthy of being concerned about that campus and that property. Because it was, it was.
Dangerous.
Well, I mean, it was, it was nowhere to park.
Just reading that you could go to Western and graduate. That was the answer. Go to Western, Derek, did you go to Western?
Yeah.
We all went to Western. No handicap problem or anything when we went to Western. You could have all, you could bring mom and dad and all the extended families come to Western. And, and an extended family that I had, I had 16 people. When you bring grandpa and grandpa and all this there, and I don't know how, somebody's praying good, you will get a storm here sometime, and they're not prepared. And I've talked to them, but Western Carolina did a wonderful job, they just bring everybody there, clean the parking and everything, but that's.
Well, I didn't realize they brought the graduation back, and I asked when that happened, what, a couple of years ago? And, I mean, it brought back memories, I mean, many, many, many years ago, I was in that position.
Didn't graduate.
You lied. I made, I made sure you did.
But if that's any, if that's any indication, I hope, you know, we asked a long time ago about the parking situation at Franklin High School Campus, and that part of the study had not been completed as far as parking with the new school, so.
Does that mean you support school now?
I've always supported school.
There we go.
Support schools, don't support $200 million.
On that line, and this has been asked by many people, why does the county taxpayers pay school teachers? That's out of my pay grade.
Why does the county?
Why does the county taxpayers pay 30 school teachers?
State doesn't provide enough funding.
Okay.
This is your bad way.
But is that, is that?
Let's bring the school board back, you know what I mean? Yeah. Put them back in the same room.
Yeah. Because, okay, so, all right, let's go into that a little bit deeper. The county pays school teachers. I'm not against the teachers, I mean, I get beat up every time we talk about this stuff. We have 30, according to the budget book. Why is it that the state funding and requirements are not sufficient? It's a state organization, and they're responsible, according to everything that I've ever heard and known and everything else, Macon County taxpayers are on the books, are on the hook for brick and mortar. So in that, you have, are those teachers, are they county employees or state employees?
No.
What?
They're not county employees.
Okay. Okay, so the school teachers that are paid by the county tax dollars are not county employees?
No, and we don't want them to be.
Okay. So now that answers the next part of the question is, is you, your budget request for county employees' pay increase was different than the school employees at 3%? So that answers that question as to that's why they're gonna get 3%.
They got 3% because it was part of a biennial budget passed by the state that was 3% last year and 3% this year, and that's in addition to any step increases that the state would give or longevity.
Yeah, okay.
It ain't right, it ain't right, but.
And, and you know, that conversation is not, or the one that, that you just said, is not a conversation that's just happening in 10 county boardrooms across the state.
Right.
It's happening in 100.
Well, when you see the state say that they have a billion dollars in surplus.
Right.
And it's, and I'm thankful for what our state leaders have brought back to Western North Carolina, but when you got a billion dollars and you're on the backs for grandma and grandpa over here to pay school teachers that the state should be funding when we gotta build a $138 million school.
Plus interest.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, that answers.
Another thing, John, you gotta keep in your mind on this thing, there's three K-12 schools in North Carolina.
Yes.
We have two of them.
Yes.
And that really pulls things out of bounds, because those kids got to have a teacher, and they may not have the right students in their classroom, but they still got to have teachers. Miss again.
But I have some questions for the Sheriff Department.
About the drone?
There are yes.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and, and tell you my, my breakdown in the Sheriff's Department. Says we have vacancies of two deputies, one detention officer, one code enforcement official. What does the code enforcement official do? Is this a new position?
That's not in the, that's not in the Sheriff's, that's in the public safety function.
That's in public safety as general.
Okay.
Building inspections is included in the public safety function.
Okay, all right.
We have three deputies. There was once.
Budget time, this was like, this is a couple of weeks. This is ever revolving.
The budget for courthouse security has more than doubled.
The courthouse security budget is all the, it's part, it's part of my budget, it's all admin, evidence, courthouse security, training, recruitment, retention, you know, it's essentially an admin budget. I have, we thought it was supposed to be changed last year, I don't know why.
Yeah, it was, when the new sheriff took office, the courthouse security budget, he put a bunch, he added a bunch, took a bunch more from other departments that were previously in other areas of the budget, and put them in the courthouse security budget. Overall, the sheriff's budget operationally is flat with what it was last year, aside from the stamping cost of living adjustment increases.
And if you, in the budget book, if you look at courthouse security on page 11, it only increased $4,000 between 24 to 25. If you're looking at the 23 actuals.
I just saw the $2 million.
Yeah. And the reason, if you, you have to kind of ignore this, because with the new sheriff, they, the old sheriff, they had three orgs within their budget. The new sheriff came in and said, I wanted things split differently, so we set up three additional orgs, they have six orgs. So what used to be courthouse security at about $823,000 now is professional services and regulations or something like that.
Yeah, like, like my budget.
But they've brought in a lot of things.
Gasoline expenses, our vehicle maintenance, because I do the fleet management, so everything like that, you know, it is put in my budget. Like, we added $66,000 for, Derek talked about it here a while back, whenever he first introduced the budget for a cloud-based server for body cams, all that's out of mind. You know, anything that incorporates the department as a whole is paid out of that budget, so it really should be called courthouse security. You know, because we service, I, I pay for all the printers, you know, the Toshiba printers out of mine, I pay for the paper supplies for those, I pay for office supplies, you know, for the department, so it's kind of a catch-all, you know, for, it's the admin, you know, recruitment, training, all that, but it's a catch-all for, you know, we supply the other, the other orgs, you know, there's six orgs, with the things that they need. So, you know, if it doesn't fit within a specific one, like if it's not just for patrol or just for detention or just for SROs, then it's, it's put into that budget. So it was part of that, and like I said, it should be named, you know, like administration and support services, but you know, they, it's still, for some reason, named courthouse security.
Okay. So I guess my biggest question is, is what do we pay for those metal detectors operations out there in the, in the courthouse?
Well, the metal detectors were bought under the last administration, I don't know what they cost us at that time, you know, I couldn't answer that, but I, we manned four employees. I have two sworn employees, two non-s sworn employees. Right now, I'm having to use some of our civil process officers and other courthouse security, and along with a part-timer, because as one of my, my sworn deputies that left to Jackson County, make $20,000 or more a year. We lost another jailer the other day, they paid more money, you know, we're, we're one of the lowest paid ones, but essentially it cost us four employees a, a year.
Okay, so those two deputies that are sworn officers, would they not be better used for your two vacancies and take those metal detectors and put them on the fourth floor of the courthouse and stop manning everybody that comes in and out of this courthouse, go to the bathroom, go to the mapping department, or, or go to, whatever?
I mean, ideally, that would be a board's discretion on how you want to operate the courthouse.
Resident Superior Court Judge. There's no, there's no court order there. There's no court order, we've, we've researched it, and, and actually, all the paperwork from the state says we get it. It's easier to put those metal detectors in the main entrances to the courthouse because that's the entrance, you can catch everybody coming in, but ideally, they should be up there outside the elevator, and whenever somebody comes in from the stairs or the elevators, they go through those metal detectors, those are for protection of the courtrooms. That, in my mind, is unconstitutional. When you come up to that door out there and it says, upon entering this facility, you're subjecting yourself to search and seizure. No, I'm not, and I had a conversation with the sheriff about this, and he said, John, we're not gonna mess with people, you may not, but you could. So in my mind, those, that's courthouse security, that's why I've been talking about a self, or freestanding justice center where you could move the DA's office out, you could move the, the clerk's office, you could move the courtrooms, you could move all this stuff. And then it leads to the next part, and, and I'm gonna bounce around here again. We just had a special election for a runoff in the primary. The Board of Elections come in to us wanting funding of $50,000 to handle this special election, which was probably 1% of the voters cast a vote in that. Well, wait a minute, if you, if we had this election in our office, we wouldn't need these additional funds. We don't have to work the hours that the state tells us that on an off-site facility. We could work our normal hours and hold that election right here and save the taxpayers a lot of money. And if that money was spent to move that office, well, well, why can't you hold it in your office? It's not ADA compliant, okay? Okay, well, what do we do to, to improve that office to be ADA compliant? You can't, it's downstairs. So if we take those detectors out there and put them upstairs where they belong and let people come in and do their county business, you can take your two staff members that are sworn officers, and you just fill these two positions for your deputies. Now, you're gonna still have courthouse security, because you still gotta operate security for the court system. But I don't know how many of everyone that's sitting in here has looked out here, and you're missing a lot of people that were coming to these meetings, and they're not coming to these meetings because of those metal detectors. Bob Scott, whether you like him, don't like him, or whatever, he came in here, he's carried a camera tool in his pocket for 40 years, and he was not allowed to come through those scanners because of that tool that he uses to work on his camera. Ain't nothing in the world that man could have done with that little bitty, little bitty screwdriver that he works on his camera. But he had to go back to his car and drop that tool off and come back in. He hasn't been back since. There are a lot of people that are missing out here that refuse to come to these commission meetings that has a lot to say. And I think that's a waste of taxpayers' money. They have a place and a purpose, and that is upstairs to protect the courtrooms. And to tell me that I am subjecting myself to search and seizure because I came in here to go to the bathroom or came in here to go to the mapping department is not the way we should be as a county. So I, I, I make a strong recommendation that we have funds to remove those, put them upstairs. It's always been told that Judge, Judge Coward has that order, we've searched for that order, we haven't found an order yet. Okay, so there's no order there.
There is an order. I mean, I've read the order and I've had it, and I thought I shared it with you a couple of years ago, but I can, I'll get that. I mean, whatever that order is, I don't remember what it says, that's why I haven't said anything, I don't remember exactly what that order says off the top of my head.
The courthouse security is to secure the courtrooms, not every office in, in this building. It's easier to do it at the main entrance, that's why they're there. So I strongly recommend that we remove those metal detectors and put them upstairs where they belong.
Then number one thing, all about the capital improvement plan, number one item on that was justice center. There's $100 million.
71 million, I think is what I.
But that was the number one identified thing by those professionals.
And we're gonna Band-Aid, I mean, the jail, there's some things in here for the jail that they need, Sheriff's told me, he said, John, that jail is, 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 and I honestly believe that with the right investment for a justice center, a new jail, that that would be making money. We subcontract meals for the inmates at the jail, we do, I mean, the jail is in bad shape, I mean, and so that's another conversation piece that.
As you can see on that, we, we had to move money, I moved money from other parts of the jail, like cost in the jail, like overtime or part-time, and moved it to maintenance. There, what are maintenance, go up from, all their, like, building and property maintenance? I think we're up to $60,000. I mean, it's all the time, like, the other day, you know, we've searched around, we, we went to the local plumbers, one in Asheville saved us quite a bit, but it's still 5,000 here, 7,000 here for pumps and plumbing and, you know, electrical issues, things like that, so we're, it's nickel and diming us today, the jail is.
Oh, yeah. What are you gonna do with the drone? What are you gonna do with the drone?
The drone, it's something that we've requested, it's a drone package, so it's actually two drones, one larger drone, one small drone. The small drone will be used as far as, like, with our SWAT team and things like that, we can put it through buildings to send in to buildings and things like that, if we have a search warrant or a hostage situation, things like that. The larger drone, we will use it for several things, like searching for missing persons, searching for fugitives, SWAT team operations, like the last one that we had, you may have read about it, I think it was in some of the local media and stuff. had, uh, you may have read about it, I think it was in some of the local media and stuff, where we had a fugitive out of Georgia, you know, that's a, uh, I guess he had some murder charges, something down there. Um, we had to request, um, wildlife, because they have a drone, you know, to come there, so it's putting up for operations, you know. My biggest thing is, as you know, you know, people like my parents, you know, where I went around with the Project Lifesaver tour, uh, we've had several times this year where people have left their residences, you know, some that have committed suicide, and we're trying to look for, for these people. So, uh, these drones are specialized, you know, as far as searching grid patterns, camera systems, things like that. The cost of the drone, you know, I know if you look at it, it's a little over thirty, um, you know, that's, the camera equipment and things like that on them are very expensive. We also have to go, I got an email for a recommendation, um, for law enforcement agencies not to use foreign, you know, drones that are manufactured in foreign countries. Spoke with Nick Loft House, he's kind of does our technology stuff. Um, there, I think there's only four, is what he said, uh, manufacturers for these type of drones in the US, and they're, you know, they're more expensive, but it covers training for four operators. Also, they have to be licensed through the FAA, so it covers all that as far as training and things like that for them to get their FAA license. But, you know, essentially, search is, you know, is the biggest thing that we use it for, um, you know, SWAT callouts, standoffs, uh, search warrants, you know, and we can't use it for surveillance for, for, uh, you know, as far as dealing with drug issues or, you know, things like that, as far as surveillance for our operations.
Um, no, I just, there again, just like the fire department, um, I've told the sheriff and every law enforcement officer, um, count on me to have your back. I am very grateful for the job that y'all do, it's, and everything else. It's just, I have to, um, I have to look at our freedoms and our rights and, and a lot of, lot of supporters agree that, um, that it's a better place for those. And seeing those two vacancies, two officers out here, I just think that, um, those officers would be much greater, uh, to your agency not standing there.
Yeah, it's hard to recruit, like I said, right now, I have a, one courthouse security officer, and, um, I have a road deputy position opening, we have one in the jail, and, you know, it's just tough to hire people nowadays.
Yeah.
We're, we're seeing that a lot, we've done well compared to what it was when we first took over, you know, but I've, I've had ones recently that, that lead for money, you know, one went to Jackson County, one the other day in the jail, said he left to, to go into, uh, pursue a career in real estate, because he says, you know, we're paying him sixteen seventy-nine an hour, start to shave in the jail, and, you know, he's like, my, you know, I guess a significant other wants to buy a house, things like that, and I, I just can't afford it, so, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can on recruiting and stuff like that, but it, it is tougher on the positions. And, you know, like I said, the courthouse position, I'm having a tough time finding one that, you know, wants to stay in here today.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, so, thank you, but that's my, uh, take on that one. I'm, I'm just gonna go over one more thing that, um, that is, um, somewhat, uh, I think now's the time to talk about it, not next week in the public hearing. The twenty-four budget and the salaries and benefits was thirty-one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-two-hundred dollars. This was an increase by one million, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars from twenty-three budget. Twenty-five budget salaries and benefits is thirty-three million, thirty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars, increase of one million, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, uh, from twenty-four, which, um, doing the math, that is the COLA increase and the step increase. Is that correct, manager? Or Ms. Lori?
It'd be plus retirement increase.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
I mean, there's all kinds of increases in there, there's retirement, which is out of our control.
Okay.
People may make different health insurance selections, they may be single on this plan year, but then get married and have kids and go to family, which is more costly, which impacts our, you know, um, salary and fringe benefits, so...
Okay. How many county employees retired in the last budget cycle? Anybody know? Well, that's information that somebody can, um, I don't expect these answers, uh, right off the bat, because these are not, um... So, I know I've been to several, um, retirement parties of county employees, and if we didn't hire anyone to replace them, how can we be on the same pattern with salaries and benefits as we have year after year? It seems to me like the salaries and benefits without considering the pay increases, with having employees retire and, and no replacement for those people, somewhere along the line we would start going down on salaries and benefits to offset that. And that's why I'm asking, how many employees retired in the last budget cycle? Um, and, and the little topic that got very heated, um, in the meeting in November. Mr. Manager, there's nothing in that budget to offset the overstaffing that you said we had.
John, I don't wanna go down this road.
I understand, but I have to, because I, I, I'm not here to argue. I was told that it was never said, it was said. Now, if you said that by a error or something, I owned my mistake, Mr. Manager, I owned it, and it did get out of hand, I was very frustrated, I don't like being called, and I call it a politically correct liar.
Uh, let's, let's be cool here, Bill.
I am, I'm not...
But, no, I'm just, I'm just talking about the whole conversation.
Yeah?
It, it's, it's, to me, it's a private conversation that's been publicized, and, uh...
It was publicized when I got attacked, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that, and, but to bring it back up at this time...
Well, we're in the breaking process, I have to ask this question.
Uh...
There's no adjustment, if, if, look, you either own your conversation and say that you said it, and it should have never been said, that's all I'm asking for. I know what I was told, I know what I'm looking at, and I think it's only fair to clear the air so we can move on. Now, we've had this conversation, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we have, we have.
And, and it was in the room, when this conversation was happening, you've never heard any part of the conversation.
That's correct.
Okay, well, there are people in this room that heard it.
But...
And I don't care if it's a mistake, it's a mistake, but don't call me a politically correct liar when it came out in a conversation, in a meeting. That's all I'm asking for. Clear it up.
But, but he's, I'm not gonna speak for him, what I'm just saying is that, to me, it's between you two adults to correct what you feel was a correction or incorrection. And I don't mind being in the same room when y'all talk about this, but it's, for me, it's uncomfortable to talk about this type of thing that happened, uh, so many months ago, back in Nov- November. I think we've got more pertinent things to talk about. I know this is, really bothers you, but it's more pertinent things to talk about as a board than personal things that occurred last year. And as chairman, I'd like to move this on to one of your last questions, be, if that's the last one, that we would go ahead and finish this tonight, not, not y'all's conversation, but, but finish the conversation of what this meeting was about.
Mr. Shields, this is the conversation. I have a budget to listen to next week.
Yes.
This budget includes salaries and benefits. If we are overstaffed, it needs to be corrected. If we're not overstaffed, then it needs to be cleared up, that, no, I misspoke, and let's move on. That's all I'm asking for.
And what I'm saying is, as chairman, that's up to him to correct that notice.
Mr. Chairman, my recommended budget proposes the level of staffing that we need to be at. So if we're still misunderstanding each other, it was the same misunderstanding that you had with me last November.
I didn't, Mr. Manager, I didn't say it.
Well, I...
You said it.
This budget is recommending the level of staffing that I think we should, that I think this organization needs.
Okay, so, uh...
And I can respect that, I can respect your thoughts.
Well, I mean, I can't move forward until this is cleared up, I mean, that's...
I know, but it's not a commissioner meeting agenda piece to move forward.
Okay.
I think you two adults have to move forward on your own, and Gary, Gary Shields, as chairman, either wanting your personal business or misunderstanding or understanding of something, it's just not, I don't think it's what we're about as a team or as a unit, and that has to be sorted out with adults or two adults. And I said, "I'd be glad to sit in any meeting with you," but I wasn't there, but I can still sit there, but you two gentlemen are adults. You two, it can never be resolved or to hit to the level that you're wanting, it won't be resolved, what I'm hearing, to the level that you want. So, we need to move this meeting on. Thank you for all the information tonight, and thanks for what everybody else has done tonight, and your input too. Uh, and I'm, we don't have anything else, I'm up for adjournment.
You got any input?
Well, I've been in meetings where we, where it was stated that we were overstaffed.
Right. Okay, that's all I was after.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Sherrill shared that with me, but that's still...
Well, but, but, listen, now, let's talk about it, what, let's, let's talk about what was said, I, I wanna know.
Yeah, but we're on, we're in a public arena, and I think those type things need to be handled in a private arena.
But, I respect that, Mr. Chairman, I respect however you wanna proceed.
Yeah.
A private arena is, um, to me, you two gentlemen, uh, or, or three, Paul, but, we're, we're on a camera here, and I think we work good as a group, and, um, and I think as county commissioners, we have the responsibility, and, and we all agree with what I'm about to say. We, we, we agree to disagree in a respectful manner. If you elaborate on something so long, it will move out of that arena, it'll become who said what. And at this time, if everybody's through, I'd like for someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Go move, Jim. Second.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All in agreement, raise your hand. Thank you very much.
I would say, uh, correction on that, on the deputies, we do have just two deputies and one detention officer, because, uh, we had a third, one deputy...